Okay.
I'm, uh, so I'm doing work at the trade at work, so I'm not at home Friday. I'll look on my camera. I know this Friday.
It's small.
I will see what happened Friday. Yeah.
Good afternoon.
How are you?
Good, thank you.
Talking down with John today?
Um, I think just John. I don't know if Jeff is coming. I think just John. Sometimes Jeff is with him. But I think it's just him.
Guess it depends on nature of the case.
How are you?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I did receive a phone call. She was running behind.
I can't do both of these. I can't do a mask. This one? This one? Do you have a mask?
Oh, no, no, no. I, I, I didn't think it's a hang one. I had a couple of months ago. We want to buy. That look like surgery.
I'm good for now. Both of them. You have four sessions.
Oh, and this man.
Yeah.
Hello.
Traffic.
Yeah, let me see. Check. He's calm.
I'm gonna text Ms. Manica.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll go ahead and get started right now. All members of council have arrived. Time is now seven oh four. Called a meeting to order. This evening is Highland Park City Council in-person and virtual regular meeting. Scheduled for Monday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven P. M. Um, tech. Tech. Can we get a little bit of elevation on this? Either that or I need to grow an additional half a foot to my torso to reach there. Can everybody hear me okay? All right, just let me know if you can, all right? Thank you so much for your feedback. Uh, Madam Perk, would you please call the role?
Council President Thomas.
Here.
Council Pro Tim Robinson.
Here.
Councilwoman Manica.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Ashafi.
Here.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Moving on to item three, the approval of the agenda. City Council have had an opportunity to look at the agenda. The floor is open.
Motion to approve with amendments.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilman Ashafi. Uh, the motion to, is this a walk-on?
Nope.
Okay, with amendments, okay. Do we have support? Would you elaborate on the amendments?
It's, uh, it's a removal, Council President.
A removal?
If it was a walk-on, I would've said walk-on, sir.
I just want to get some clarification. I don't know what it is, and so the way to know is to ask. Thank you very much. We have support for Mr. Ashafi's motion to approve the agenda with amendments. You need to say what the amendments are too, sir.
Or removal, whatever.
Or a removal. This is a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of, fill in the blanks.
Legal C. Resolution to approve new city employee handbook.
Okay, Mr. Ashafi is making a motion to approve the agenda uh, with amendments, and that will be the removal of the resolution to approve the new city handbook. Do we have support?
I support.
We have support from Council Pro Tim Robinson. Um, the floor is open for discussion. We have any discussion on this item?
Yeah, so, uh, so, the Council President, I have two manuals here.
Yes, sir.
And I've been getting calls left and right about this manual.
Has the manual been made public yet?
No, it has not been made public.
So how are we getting calls on it if it's not?
Okay, well, apparently somebody leaked it to them.
Okay, so who, who has copy of the employee handbook?
Okay.
Um, um, Ms. Burton, who will be in control of that document? Who will release it to the public? Um, Mr. Clark, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
If you would, on behalf of legal department, who has access to that document for it to be leaked?
Council President and members of council, good evening. Uh, myself, city administrator, uh, the mayor, uh, and probably H. R.
So that, there's, there's, outside of that control chain, there's no one that will have access to it?
That's correct. Oh, and Adrian from the legal department.
Okay, so, Mr. Ashafi, to your point, you wanted to, you were saying something about the document being
Yes, yes.
The city attorney has just made it clear that that is a controlled document.
Okay, so. Okay, that's fine. So, my question is simple. Um, I'm reading over this document, and I noticed that you have removed literally every safeguard for the pensioners of the city. I'm not finding it. It's so different. At the end, before you get started, I notice, I noticed that you gave us a standard document. None of this was highlighted or outlined as to what the changes are or, or anything of that nature, but you made sure that when we were writing the orders for the marijuana, you made sure that we had to highlight our changes. And you should've done the same thing here.
So right now, it's a discussion on
No, 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 sir.
Excuse me, sir. Right now, this is the discussion on approval of the agenda. You have made the recommendation. You made a motion to have item C removed. It had been supported by Council Pro Tim Robinson. The city attorney has made it clear that that is a controlled document. And they, what's at stake here now is removing this item from the agenda. That's something you want removed from the agenda?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I would simply like to say that council was not included in this document. It did not come before us. We didn't have a workshop. It is, it is twenty-five pages thicker than the previous document, and, and, and nobody showed us anything. Nothing's been highlighted here, but yet you want us to approve a document in which council should have been included in.
Okay.
And we should have some workshops on it.
City administrator, it says city, which includes administrative office for the handbook. At this point, we'll go ahead and thank you, Mr. Clark, on that. Uh, we have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda with amendments. That will be the removal of item C, the approval of the new city handbook. Um, this, the Councilwoman Manica.
All right, before we actually vote on that agenda to remove it, wouldn't we do that in discussion? Once we get to it in the agenda?
That item could be tabled. It could be, there's a lot of things that we could do with that item. It hasn't been expanded upon.
That's where we could bring up any questions.
Correct, yes, ma'am. We have the option to do that. So right now, we have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda, amending the agenda by removing item C. It's up to members whether or not they want to remove item C or whether they would like to have further discussion on item C.
I wish continue with the removal of item C.
So that's, that's the motion on the floor. We'll take a vote on that in just a minute, but that is what we have, just to clarify for Councilwoman Manica. If it's something that you would like to discuss, something that like you would like to see further fleshed out, that could be done when item C comes up on the agenda. And any questions related to that could be answered. That, that, that's efficient?
If he removes it.
Yes.
So, so, so if it's removed, we'll never get to have a conversation about it. And the, the attorney has already made it clear to us that this is not a document that's available to the public. It hasn't been leaked. It couldn't be leaked because it hasn't been released. So, it's up to members what they want to do. Any additional questions on this, the agenda? Again, we have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda with amendment. That amendment will be the removal of item C. This motion was made by Councilman Ashafi. It's been supported by Council Pro Tim Robinson. Madam Perk, would you call the vote, please, on approving the role?
On approving.
But this is approving the agenda. I'm sorry, approving the agenda?
With the removal of item C.
With the removal of item C.
Council President Thomas.
No.
Council Pro Tim Robinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
No.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilman Ashafi.
Yes.
Okay, the item C has been stricken from the agenda. Can you go ahead and put a strike through for item C? Agenda has been approved and amended. Uh, next item four is the approval of the proposed minutes, in-person and virtual regular meeting minutes from September fifth, twenty twenty-three.
I move to approve the minutes with amendments.
Second. So we have a motion on the floor to approve the amendment, to approve the minutes with amendments. So with the, at this stage now, you want us to amend the minutes as they are written?
Yes, sir.
Could you expand on that, please?
Yes. At the last council meeting, I asked that it be put on record that new C. C. resolution died for lack of support, and asked that it be included in the minutes, and it is not.
Is there anyone, can someone read?
Yeah, she'll not hear. Yep, go ahead, Ms. Manica.
Can someone find or, or read for me what dies for lack of support? Can we get some clarity to that?
Yep, it's in the Robert Trues border book.
That was the one we had two and two.
Mm-hmm.
There was, uh,
Yeah, perhaps. Our weight abstains, the extension. We have it?
No one. I, I'm looking, cause no, I didn't know one saying anything.
You're not the one that brought it up, ma'am. You shouldn't be the one looking.
Boy, the team effort is amazing.
Can you tell me where that's at, guys? Cause of what I see, I don't see it.
For the people in the audience, we are still on item forty, approval of the minutes.
The clerk can explain, because she mentioned it to you four times.
Council President, may I speak?
Yes, ma'am, would you please?
Council actions are reflected in the minute by votes. There was a two-two vote, which automatically made the item not pass. You have to have a three or more vote in order for item to pass. So with the two-two vote, the item did not pass. And that's how the official record is reflected. And that's how the official record is reflected. There is no need for a statement, because that does it. That's not how counsel act. They, they act on votes.
Thank you, ma'am, for clarity.
Sure.
So, we want to restate these motions, so we can get these minutes approved, or not? You made a motion to approve. Challenge is not supported by the rules. How are we going to proceed with this to approve the minutes?
Councilman Robinson either has to go forward with it, or she has to say she rescinded it.
And if she rescinds, I rescind mine as well.
Okay, so we have, she hasn't rescinded yet, but I mean, the Council Pro Tim, it's up to you. This is just the approval of the minutes.
Do not wish to rescind by putting minutes to be amended.
The clerk has just stated that the minutes are a record of what occurred. We can't amend what occurred.
What is she supposed to say?
To, to put in the record that this item died for lack of support. It passed.
It didn't die for, if I may, I'm sorry.
Ma'am, please.
Good evening, counsel. It didn't die for lack of support. You would have had to have had support in order to vote on the item. There was a tie, and so it failed, just failed. And the clerk is indicating that she just doesn't put whether or not it failed, because if it says it's two and two, that means it failed, but it's not for lack of support.
When an item comes to the floor, members of council take no action at all. No one steps up to make a motion. No vote is taken. It dies for lack of support. That is not what occurred at the last meeting. It was brought on the floor. A vote was taken. A member exited the room. Two members voted against. Two members voted in favor. That's a stalemate. That means it doesn't pass. Does not mean it died for lack of support. We've had other issues come before this council where no one took action at all. No one said a word. That item died for lack of support.
That is correct, because our minister did say that a council member walked out.
I sure did. That's a fact. We have to put a factual, a record of what actually occurs during the framework of the meeting. If someone walks out in the middle of a vote, it's included.
Yeah.
President, may I speak?
Yes, ma'am, please.
So, I'm, I'm a little confused on what's going on here. So, we're talking about amending the agenda, correct?
No.
No, the minutes.
I mean, the minutes, that's what I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, that's what I meant, the minutes, right? The minutes for?
Yes, the minutes are a record of what occurred.
For September fifth.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're amending it to put, for it to reflect?
Madam Pro Tim is asking that the minutes reflect that an item died for lack of support. That is not what occurred. What occurred is that the item didn't pass. Two people voted against it. Two people voted for it. One person left the room.
Come at the last meeting when?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We are still on Item Four. We're trying to approve the minutes. We are at twenty-two after the hour.
It's on the last page of the minutes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking. Thank you.
Okay, yes, Ms. Manica, go ahead.
Clarity. So, just for clarity, so if it dies for lack of support, what does that mean?
It means that you didn't get the support on a motion. That's not what happened.
Oh, I, I understand. I just, I'm just trying to be clear, and also trying to make sure that everybody understands. It's clear before we definitely vote, so that we have some clarity here. But, I'm not sure. I don't know. Everybody doesn't know, but it's, it's being explained. So I, I, now I'm becoming a little confused.
What's the confusion?
Why are we still sitting here? Yes, ma'am, I'm confused as well. So, we have the approval of the minutes, which is a record of the last meeting. And at issue here is that we're being asked to do something that's, without a time machine, we can't go back and change what occurred during that meeting. It is a record of what actually occurred. You cannot amend what happened. So are we stuck on this? Are we to the point where we need to just call a vote and either approve or not approve the minutes? So we have a motion on the floor from Council Pro Tim Robinson to approve the proposed minutes with amendments that's supported by Councilman Ashapi. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Council President Thomas.
No.
Council Pro Tim Robinson.
Councilwoman.
This is your motion, ma'am.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
No.
Councilwoman Martin.
Not sure.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'm still not sure what we want this, what are we, uh? Pro Tim Robinson. You are asking for the minutes to reflect that there was a stalemate?
No.
No.
Or are you? I'm sorry. Are you?
I'm asking for a minute to say that it died for lack of support.
That is not what occurred, ma'am.
I thought it was a stalemate.
It was a stalemate.
It was stalemate. It did not die for lack of support.
So it wasn't supported?
It was, a motion was brought on the floor. It was voted on.
And there was two yeses and two noes.
And one person got up and left the room.
Right.
The, I believe you, the vote is to you, Ms. Martin.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. So, so it was, yes, we wanted amended, or no, we don't?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Duff.
Councilman Ashapi.
Yes, okay. That, approval of those proposed minutes with that amendment, it failed at a vote of three to two. Thank you very much. Uh, do we have Mary McDonald on the line? Is she available at all?
Do we still have to approve it?
I'm sorry. Okay, so we have, so that, that motion was on the floor to approve the minutes with, um, amendments. Do we have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes? Yes, Councilwoman Manica?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes in-person and virtual meeting, September fifth, two thousand and twenty-three.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica to approve the minutes, the actual minutes from the in-person and virtual regular meeting on September fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Do we have support? Chair, offer support. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll to approve these in-person and virtual regular meeting minutes? I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, forgive me.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, to approve the minutes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson.
No.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilman Ashapi.
No.
Thank you very much. Your minutes were approved at a vote of three to two. At this time, we turn the floor over to Mary McDonald. I believe she is with us remotely. Madam Mayor, would you like to address the public and city council?
Thank you, um, Chair. I, I will be brief. Uh, good afternoon or evening to the citizens and the council. Thank you for having me. I want to thank everyone for coming out last Sat- not Saturday, I'm sorry, last week for the, uh, groundbreaking and ceremony of the Joe Louis Greenway partnership. It was a wonderful event. A lot of people came out. I am excited about this event. I want to thank the partnership with Detroit, as well as the Joe Louis Greenway Partnership, uh, organization, uh, Wayne County, and anyone else that's a part of this, uh, this wonderful, uh, groundbreaking. Also, this past Saturday, there was a bike ride with the Joe Louis Greenway partnership and the Highland Park Riders. We were able to ride the, uh, enti- uh, entire, um, I'm sorry, ride the entire, uh, view of the, uh, where the Joe Louis Greenway will be. We were told that it will be, uh, open by the end of twenty-five, uh, which is not that far away, so I'm glad that is happening. Also, this Saturday, coming up on the twenty-third, we are having our first youth explosion.
Can you guys hear her in the back? I'm sorry, go ahead.
This is for all of the youth in the city. Bring your youth out. It will be right in the, uh, parking lot across the street from the city hall. We're not going to try to make it very large this year. So we will have our first one. So if you have children that you want to bring out, and this goes all the way up to the age of thirty years old. So I know those are adults, but youth, that is our youth program that we're starting to prove, uh, put together. So there will be entertainment. There will be bouncy and food, and, uh, a lot of, uh, resources for your children from the area, and some are coming, uh, outside of the area for programs. So please come out and join us. Uh, Walk with the City was a very good success. We finished for the year. That was our last one. I had an opportunity to walk with the superintendent of school, Dr. Zakiya Gibson, and we talked about the growing of the city and how great it would be to have, uh, homes in various areas, especially near Barber School and George Washington Carver. So, uh, I'm hoping that we can continue to get these developments taken care of, because without housing, there is no children. And without housing, there is no tax base. And so please be aware that when we don't get our, um, developments done, we are losing out on good revenue that could come to the city to help us grow our city. Um, the other thing was the, um, coffee and conversation. This past coffee and conversation was standing room only. I was so excited to see people come out. They had questions. They wanted answers. They talked about the different things that they wanted to see in the city. So it was a good event, and I'm glad we were able to execute that. Um, I don't have anything else. Oh, yes, I do. Please be mindful, uh, citizens, COVID-nineteen, RSV, and, um, other viruses is on the rise, influenza A and B. So, wear your mask in crowded areas. Protect yourself with san- sanitizer, as well as continue to wash your hands. Uh, we want to make sure that everyone is safe. So please, 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 if you're going into an area where there's a lot of people or an event, please wear a mask for your own protection. Thank you. Have a good evening, and I'll be signing off. Have a great day.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Okay, citizens, we're going to move into the citizens' participation as it relates to agenda items. There's a section under legal. A is not for public discussion. There is, uh, Item B, which is the Resolution to Approve the Collective Bargaining Agreement for the City. Resolution to appoint Mr. Scotty Boswell to the Tifa. Submission of the Monthly Statement. Community Development Resolution to Sell Property to Sepia Coffee. Resolution to Approve the Purchase Agreement with, uh, Six Mile Oakland LLC. There, the Treasurer, the Resolution to Set Alternative Dates for July and December for the Board of Reviews. Those items are available for discussion. Anyone who would like to be heard, please step to the podium. We're asking for two minutes. Of course, I'm gonna add that minute grace period. This room is full, so I want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak. If you'd like to speak, please queue up at the mic, and I will greet you as you come, on agenda items only. Good evening, sir.
Uh, good morning, counsel. My name is Gregory Moslin. I'm a resident, Highland Park resident. And I'm want to address the, uh, the sale of the vacant lot to the Six Mile Oakland LLC. I disagree oh, uh, with the, uh, sale of residential property to this, uh, company based on the existing number of gas stations along Six Mile and the Detroit border. Um, these gas stations do not prove the quality of life of the residents in that community. It draws a number of undesirables, and it ties up city resources and policing in this area because of the, the ongoing issues we have with these establishments. Also, the burden that will face the residents with the expansion of their establishment will fall on us in terms of keeping our immediate properties safe and secure because of the undesirables that this property or this business will attract with its expansion. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Before you leave, do you live in that area?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have anyone else that would like to be heard?
Hi, Russell Martin. Um, I'm really hoping that the city's going to give the firefighters a good deal. Please try to do something. We need people in this city. Um, also, there's a question about, um, Scotty Boswell. For this Tifa, what does Tifa do? Can somebody explain exactly what Tifa does? Because somebody said that on Woodward, Tifa is responsible for that junk, where old famous furniture. If they are, they need to do something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
Um, question, um, can you still ask to purchase a lot even though the auction is in process?
Ask that question again?
Can you ask to purchase a lot even though the auction is in process? Progress, whatever.
So, I, I think the auction properties are put up on the website, and that might be separate from existing city property. You'd have to check with the real estate office. That's a good question, because the properties, I believe, I could be wrong. There's a list set up for those properties to be auctioned, but there's still inventory within the city. And the person who would probably know way more about that than I would, be Ms. Roslin, if you got a hold of her down in the real estate department, she might be able to distinguish one or the other. Is this a property that's on the auction, or is this part of city inventory that might be up for sale?
Okay.
And then too, I can't help it. I mean, it's Ms. Namby. I'm not supposed to, I, I'm not supposed to answer questions off the agenda, but you, Ms. Namby, so that's why I answered it anyway. Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, um.
Yes.
The auction is only for houses.
Okay. Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Okay.
So lots and the auction, it's different.
Yes, I believe they were separate.
Uh, a question regarding that. Who, um, put those prices up for those houses? Because some of those bidding, I mean, like, they should be ending prices.
It's gotta be on this, it's gotta be on the agenda list.
Oh, I thought we were dealing with.
That's at the end of the meeting, that two minutes.
Development.
Under community development, but there's nothing that it talks about, other than the lots that are for sale here.
I was asking, who made up those prices for the auction?
Uh, that's not, that's not any agenda.
Okay.
But you can't ask that at the end. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to be heard?
I just have a question. I want to know if, uh, these financial statements, are they, are they public works?
Are they public?
Can they be assessed by the public? You vote on them. The citizens don't know what's happening. We should have the choice to know what's in these things before it comes to the city council for you to vote on.
Yes, ma'am. That monthly financial statement is just, it's a ledger that's delivered to us, and it might be available on the website. I'm not exactly sure. This is just a monthly ledger.
It's just the bills that were paid.
But that's not what's written. It says a financial statement. That could include a lot of things.
No, ma'am.
So if you're talking to me as a citizen, I don't know it's just the bills to be paid.
Well, that's what it is.
Okay, well, it should be written as such.
Thank you very much. Do we have any additional citizens that would like to be heard? Yes, sir. This is for agenda items. So just for the people in the room, if there's something that you want to talk about that's not related to agenda, at the end of the meeting, the floor is open for citizens to come and have their two plus minutes and discuss anything that's not on the agenda. So seeing no more people come to the podium, we will move on to Item Five under legal. Five A is a Resolution to Convene in a Closed Session Regarding the Status of Contract Negotiations Between the City of Highland Park and the Michigan Association of Firefighters. City Council, how do we proceed with this? Item five A. Going in a closed session or not?
I move to take us into closed session regarding status of contract negotiations between the City of Highland Park and the Michigan, the Michigan Association of Firefighters.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica to convene a closed session regarding contract negotiations between the City of Highland Park and the Michigan Association of Firefighters. Do we have support?
I support.
We have support from Council Pro Tim Robinson. Madam Kirk, would you please take the role on item five A?
Council President Thomas.
Yes, to convene a closed session.
Council Pro Tim Robinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes, for closed session.
Councilman Ashafi.
Yes, for closed session.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it is seven thirty-seven. We will take a short recess for our closed session and we will be back thereafter. I'm just, we go on with the internet question. Chair would entertain a motion to reconvene.
I would make a motion to reconvene into a city council meeting.
Second. Motion on the floor to reconvene from Councilwoman Manica, seconded by Councilman Ashafi. All those in favor, please? Aye. Meeting is back in session at seven forty-five PM. Five B under legal, this is the resolution to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Highland Park and the Michigan Association of Firefights. We are at item five B, the resolution to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Highland Park and the Michigan Association of Firefighters on behalf of part-time firefighters, city council. What is your pleasure on this item?
I move to approve the resolution to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Highland Park and the Michigan Association of Firefighters on behalf of part-time firefighters.
Second. We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica, seconded by Councilman Ashafi to approve the resolution, um, the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Highland Park and the Michigan Association of Firefighters on behalf of part-time firefighters. Madam Kirk, would you please call the role on item five B?
I'm President Thomas.
Yes.
Pro Tim Robinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilman Ashafi.
Absolutely. And just as a point of order here, item C has been stricken from the agenda. That is a resolution to approve the new city handbook. Moving on to item six, under the mayor's offices, the resolution to appoint Scotty Boswell to the Tax Increment Finance Authority.
I have support. I want to make a motion to support with questions.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Martin, supported by Councilwoman Manica to approve the appointment of Mr. Scotty Boswell to the Tax Increment Finance Authority with questions, please, ma'am.
Is um, is he here? Well, no.
One second, let me see if he's online. Uh, just a second. I jumped off. Just need to see if this person's online. Not see Mr. Boswell.
Okay, no worries. Um, my first question is, I am with Ms. Martin. Um, what does Tifa do?
So, okay. Just one second. Tax increment financing is a mechanism which allows municipalities to create districts and development areas showing evidence of deteriorating property value and then captures taxes generally from new capital investment within those districts. That's the internet explanation of what tax increment financing authority boards do. Mr. Ashafi.
Council President, uh, does Tifa have the authority to act without this council approval?
The, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong.
No.
That the Tifa functions as a board under the umbrella of the city. I don't think they can do anything without our approval. We are the approving authority for decisions made on behalf of the city entering in contracts and things of that nature. We are the governing body.
Right.
The floor is still yours, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Council President. So uh, I have a, I have a question here. Um, how many of these newly appointed members along with Mr. um, Scotty, uh, Scotty, Scotty Boswell here are Highland Park residents? I'm looking at uh, Mr. Boswell. I'm looking at uh, I don't know how you say his first name, but Louis. I'm looking at Alicia Robinson. I'm looking at Derek Brown and I'm looking at Akari Jackson.
I can't, I can't answer those questions for you, sir. Is there someone who can answer those questions?
Yeah, is there, is there somebody that can answer that question for me?
Didn't, I'm sorry.
The one that's up today is the appointment of Scotty.
Yeah, so, so again, as, as the attorney is reminding us that we need to do, we need to stick to the items on the agenda.
I understand that, sir. I am sticking to the item. I asked that question. I asked that question because Mr. Boswell is clearly a Detroit resident and from what I'm looking at here, you have over the limits of outside residents that you can appoint to this board. You are over that limit.
Mr. Boswell lives at fifty-five East.
That's what I just asked you.
You, you said.
I asked the same question. I said, is he a Highland Park resident? I asked the same question.
It's right, I just opened this page. It's right there, just like I just saw it. It's right there. Anybody.
I asked that question, Council President.
Anyone who picked this document up, so you're asking me. You asked me. I picked the document up and turned the page and the very first thing I see right there is Scotty Boswell, fifty-five East. That means anybody who picked this piece of paper up will be able to answer that question. I don't know how to help you. I mean, they gave us all this document. Don't leave it up to me to read it for you. I'm just saying. It took me a second.
A second, huh?
It took me one second. As you started to talk, I just opened the document and there it was, right there. Anybody else?
I'll tell you, I'm looking at the same document and I don't see that address.
Right at the top of the page, on the second page.
Oh, in small prints. In extremely small print.
On a resume, that's how you put your address. If you're looking for a job, if you're looking for a job, you fill out a resume like that. Yes, ma'am, Madam Miss Manic.
So I, I just had, um, going back to Councilman Ashafi. Um, did you name who you named already?
Okay, so, uh, so I'm looking at uh, Mr. Lewis. Uh, I want to say that this is Leslie Robertson, Derek Brown and Kari Jackson. How many of these are Highland Park residents?
So we also have, didn't we approve last week, Woodard?
Huh?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, hold up a second. And, and, and also, there's also Travor Satter or Satter and Chris Woodard. Now, I know that Chris Woodard is Highland Park resident. I'll tell you, so that's no problem there.
It's Ms. Robinson.
Okay, Ms. Robinson is a Highland Park resident?
Yeah.
She lives around the corner from this building.
Okay. What about Satter?
Excuse me?
The other guy. I don't remember.
Trevor or Traver Satter, S Satter. S A R T E R.
If you want the residents, you can make that request.
Okay.
But the motion that's up tonight is to whether or not, okay, to approve Scotty Boswell.
Okay, Madam Attorney, I have made that, uh, I have made that request and I've gotten nowhere with it.
Okay, so right now we have a resolution on the floor to approve Scotty Boswell. This resolution was made by Councilwoman Martin.
I mean, page, page five, it talks about Tifa district boundaries. What is that exactly that we're looking at? Yeah, right here.
That's the part that they.
So.
Take care of.
They only take care of that area?
It's a bit, no, that's so.
She's talking about the red.
Right, right, right. Ms. Clear? I'm sorry. Mr. Hampton, do you explain the boundaries of the Tifa if you would be so kind? I mean, do we have, she wants to, she wants to get an understanding of why they're.
We have them here.
They have to what? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
They have to have an stride bound, downbound in order to collect that tax increment. That's the area.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Okay, say it again.
Okay. A Tifa district.
Okay.
The boundaries there are there to make sure that they collect the tax increment from the new investment within that boundary in the world.
So that, this is the only place they can operate?
Yes.
Can't operate in this area or any of this area, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and you said they collect tax data, is that my understanding correct?
Well, as, as
Go ahead.
As new investment takes place in that area, there is an incremental tax increase.
Okay.
Because of, you know, properties usually have low value.
Okay.
So the investor, investment gives it value.
And so they don't do anything else outside of that area, correct?
Right.
Okay. Okay, no further questions.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Martin, seconded by Councilwoman Manica to approve Mr. Scotty Boswell to the Tax Increment Finance Authority. Madam Kirk, would you please call the role on item six?
Council President Thomas.
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson.
No.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes. Yes.
Councilman Ashafi.
No.
Thank you very much. Item seven, under Finance, this is the submission of the monthly financial statement. This is a receive and file. This is just the submission of our bills that were paid for August. We have a motion on the floor as it relates to item seven, the submission of the monthly financial statement. This is a receive and file. City Council, how should we move on this?
Support with questions.
Ms. Martin, I think you want to make a motion to.
I'm sorry, you're right, Mr. President. Can I make a motion to support with questions?
Yes, ma'am, you want to receive and file with questions.
Um, I want to, I want to receive.
Yeah.
So what?
So, Ms. We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Martin. Yeah. We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Martin to receive and file the monthly financial statement for August. Do we have support?
Support.
There's support from Councilwoman Manica. Yes, ma'am, the floor is yours.
Um, is there anybody from Finance that's online right now?
Or is she a president?
No.
Uh, I believe we do. Let me check, quick look. Um, Ms. Williams is on the line. Ms. Williams, could you unmute for us? Ms. Martin has some questions for you, if you're available.
Yes, good evening, council.
Yeah, could, could someone turn up the, the volume on that device so the people in the back of here? Remote control for this television, council? We can get the volume of that up. You and mine.
I don't know how to do that either.
Okay. Ms. Eleanor. Are you there?
Yeah.
Ms. Martin had a question for you.
Great evening, Ms. Williamson, how you doing?
Fine, how are you?
I'm good. I appreciate everything you do. Um, I just have a quick question. I know there's, there's two of you that work in the Finance Department, correct?
Yes.
I'm wondering if, if it's possible to, um, you know, have a chart that we could look at so we can look at a quick glance of not only where we've been, but where we could possibly go, be going financially.
Yeah, according to this, it's in the toilet.
But that's not good if something's going in the toilet, you're getting rid of it. That's not good.
Because the prices keep going up every month. This is higher than last month.
You have more, Ms. Martin?
That's it, that's it. Is that possible?
Anyone else? Questions before we vote on it? Yes, to Mr. Ashafi.
Council President, these numbers are really getting out of control here. I think, I think that we need a little bit more detailed information instead of just this list every month as to what's being spent, why is it being spent, what is the purpose of it being spent? I mean, these numbers are outrageous.
That's why I said, yeah, a chart.
These numbers are outrageous, you know what I'm saying? I mean, they are rough.
Right.
These are rough numbers. The only number that is low is city councils. Okay? I mean, everybody else is, is, is through the roof.
This is Mr. Williams. To Mr. Ashafi's point, this is a list of our operating expenses for a city of ten thousand people, am I correct? This is basically your P and L for a month, so this is your monthly profit and loss statement. We're about to end this fiscal year and move into the next fiscal year. Um, I know how to read a profit and loss statement, and so the numbers for the last nine months have pretty much corresponded to doing business in the city, what the monthly expenditures are. We're moving into the last quarter of this fiscal year. No? I'm sorry, July one for cities. I'm used to government fiscal year, which is October first.
So, your new budget started July one.
Ah.
So, these are your budgeted expenses, and they draw down as the year continues. The year will end on June thirtieth.
Okay.
For next year.
For next year, they start July one and end June thirtieth. You just adopted a budget back in June.
Right.
And so this is the spend-out.
Okay.
So, you have already approved these expenses.
Okay.
And now they are being spent.
Okay.
Thank you for that, Ms. Square.
Let me just go one step further. The question of, your, your question is, really, are we on track with the budget?
No, my question is, can we make a chart that reflects these numbers so we know where we've been? And we could predict where we're going financially?
You know, again, you already said it. We got two people in five. And so.
Where's Carl?
The job is brutal. So, new charts and new pie charts and all of that is a whole other activity that they have to look in the winter. They have time to do something like that. But, but what that is, is the budget you adopted. And now they're spending it. Most of our expenses here are payroll, police, fire, the court. And then the other expenses are insurance, uh, maintenance. We don't have a lot of money. We're just doing the bare bones minimum. So, that's what those costs are. Approve that budget, and now that money's being spent. How you track it, that's, that's a whole different procedure. You know, some places like Oakland County, they need every Monday.
So.
It's really a budget. Are we on track with the budget that you approved?
Okay, so then, looking at it at a glance, how do we know that we're on track? Like, how, how do we know as city council and the citizens, because it is on, on the website, how do we know that we're on track? Is it just take our word for it that we're on track?
No, it's, you know, it's a lot more attention than is given to it because we're such a small organization, we don't have all the reporting out. But you pretty much know, like, there's some, there's some lines there that.
See you, Ms. Williamson.
Where we are, budget versus actual. And I think, you know, understanding how to read that report, because it's in the report. It's going to tell you where we are, and that's.
So.
Maybe you need to have a sit-down.
Where would I see that in this report, that we're on track?
And so, Ms. Williamson is online.
Hello, Ms. Williamson.
You want her to go through all of the report, maybe that's what we need.
No, I want a chart that reflects where we've been and where we're going. I mean, finance, finances is like the bloodline of the business.
I know, when you say where we, where we live, where you made from July one until now?
July one, it could be, I, you know, I'm not asking for the whole year, but three months, because, you know, there's even a spending pattern that, that we have a business has a spending pattern. And with charts, you can see quickly at a glance what's going on. And what I'm asking is, can we do that? I mean, that will tell you if we're having, if we're doing healthy, if we're healthy spending, or kind of like Mr. Ashafi said, or, or is it going in the toilet?
That's a question for the mayor. I'm not the mayor. Yeah, that's the, I don't want to, it's the mayor's administration, that's a house, it's the mayor and the fighters.
We can make adjustments to the budget if we need to, right?
So, this.
Of course.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson.
Uh, so again, to the people in the public, those of you who are, who are business owners, this is a monthly P and L budget. That's what we're talking about right now.
I understand.
People who are, who are familiar with running a business, you'll know what this looks like.
Yeah, but don't they do charts in the business too?
No, ma'am, you do this.
But they know, they do charts also. You're right, they do that.
This, this is.
But they also do charts, so everybody knows, all departments knows what's going on. That's what you have to do collectively. Same thing with the body, same thing with the head. We all have to know what's going on to move forward.
Okay.
That's all I'm asking, that's all I'm saying.
All we ask is a little bit more detail than what you give us.
Okay. Ms. Manica, if you would.
So, what I think, Ms. Martin, saying, looking at the numbers doesn't do it for her, per se. Like, it may do for me, or Ms. Robinson, or someone else. She wants to see it in a chart form so she can see that up, down, oh, you know, is it going in a straight line? Is it up or down? And maybe that's how she interprets it, is why she's asking that way. And so, I don't know how it will tell us what's going to happen necessarily in the future, but it will say, did we gain, did we spend a lot, did we just stay even? And she'll see it better that way on a chart. I, I, that's my interpretation of it.
No, 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 no. It goes back to what I said. We're, we know where we've been, where we're going. Right now, I'm in business school, and it even talks about when you have charts, you know exactly. Like, don't get me wrong, this is great. I'm not knocking this down, I'm not saying that this is wrong, this is bad, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, once again, at a quick glance, you can compare your last month, and then where you're going next month, you can make better predictions, that's what I'm saying. If we repeatedly keep saying, where is the city going if we keep completely, if we keep saying we don't have the money, and we're broke, where are we going? That doesn't make any sense. That's anybody. You, you, we all here have bills, right? If you don't know where the money is going, what direction you're going in, how do you sit up there and thrive? That doesn't make sense, that's all I'm saying. So, at a glance.
Our, our problem mostly is we don't have it coming in.
That's fast.
Right, but then we can make. I get that.
Because the town is empty. And as we get the town filled with more homeowners and businesses, you're going to bring money in. So, all of our money is going out, most of it.
Yes, correct, but going where?
The payroll.
Where is it, where is it mainly going?
Fire, the court.
Okay, so where is the money coming in to us to pay police and the fire? Like I said, that.
Income tax and state benefits share.
With all due respect, ladies, this, this document in front of me, I'm not an accountant. Um, I have somebody else do my taxes. This is a very detailed account of what transactions have occurred in the city. It's a full page, it's filled, it's a monthly financial statement. We have a motion on the floor made by Councilwoman Martin, supported by Councilwoman Manica, to receive this document and put it in a file. Madam Clerk, would you please call.
Mr. President, is this taxes? This is not a tax sheet, right?
No, this is just, this is just the monthly state, like, you get a bank statement from your bank.
Right, that's what I thought.
So, yeah, so, Ms. 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 Williamson, did you, did you please, would you please make a note of that? I think what, uh, Ms. Martin is looking for is a little bit of clarity. You are a certified public accountant, you have a master's degree in accounting, I do not. Nobody else on city council does, and that, she's asking for more information so that she could understand the process better and be, be better prepared in her role. I think that's what she's asking.
Okay, well, everybody's interpreting what I'm asking. The question is, Ms. Williamson, can you just, from this sheet, and we can't do charts because we only got two people, I got that. My question is, where has the money gone that we keep repeatedly saying we don't have any money? Where's it going?
You, you have the, the, the chart. What you should be looking at is the activity for the month. This is why you get the month of the report every month. You can look at the activity, um, if you flip the fir, oh, flip over the first page and where it starts at, page one, you will see the column that says, Activity for the Month of August.
You said the second page?
It's, it's.
So then, when I have citizens that call me, when I have citizens that call me and they ask me, you know, where's the money going, do I talk to them about page two, three?
So, page one and two is the accounts, and it tells you what has been spent for that month. So, so say your last report you got for July. You can look at the report for, for all, for this month and last month. That's how you can do the comparison to see what was spent in August to what was spent in July. It's not going to be the same every month. Every month is different. We get new vendors, we get new lawsuits, we get new whatever. I cannot tell you going forward what, what the month is going to look like because it, as it comes in, that's how it's paid out. So, yes, like as Kathy said, we spend out more money than we, than, you know, we get. We may only collect, say, for instance, uh, state revenue sharing, we get that. But then also, we have to, so much of our revenue sharing go to debt service where we have to pay all of our bonds and bills and stuff like that. So, we still have a balanced budget, but as the time go on, if things need to change, then that's when we need to submit amendments to amend the budget. But as of right now, you have the biggest expenses for the month, as she said, is police and fire and the court. Every other department is kind of regular. And then you have your tech register where you can see what has been paid out for the, for the month.
Okay, so, we also just spent, what, we just gave a million dollars, right, for the water? That wouldn't be in this month, would that be in June or July? But that's not in here.
That wasn't in May. That was, that was last.
Okay, but that wouldn't be in here.
No, this is this year. The court's already gone, the auditors aren't here.
But that would have been in this, not this particular report, but a report like this.
Yeah, it would have been in a report like that. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson.
You're welcome.
Anything, anything further, Ms. Martin?
No, that's it.
Okay, anything on Mr. Ashafi, you had your hand up?
Yes, sir, I have one question. Uh, Ms. Square mentioned something that I asked before. And again, I, I will ask that question of this, of this body again. Why are we propping up the court system? They're supposed to be paying us for the rental space. Why are we paying for that? I heard that. It said, police, fire, courts. Why are we propping up the court system with our money? They make enough money, they should be paying us. Why are we paying that?
They're, they're in harm of our government.
Their obligation of the city.
Their obligation of the city?
Yeah.
I hadn't read that anywhere.
They used to, back in the day, we got a booming city, you had two gyms.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, the park was a lot bigger, but with the four generations, and with the police department shrink, there isn't the same amount of activity. And so, that's, the court was making a lot of money back in the day. They had a lot of traffic, a lot of people depressed, a lot of, you know, crime, a lot of that. See, all of that generates the revenue that they take. So, with all that going down, they have less revenue. They moved out of the building because they had, according to them, inhospitable working conditions.
They're still here, they're still operating this room.
They still operate, they're over in that surplus building that we have. Police department went over there when the flood flooded up the entire lower level. But it's an expense of the city. Now, we can't tell them how to spend it, but council appropriates their budget, so they have to put in a budget for payroll. They have a lot of people over there, probably more people than part of the whole of West City Hall. They have your expenses, they have all sorts of legal services, uh, lawyers, et cetera.
Yeah, yeah, because I remember that we're already, we're already, uh, propping up the water at the, at the tune of, of over, over two million dollars, that we're not going to see that money back.
That's for.
I think that money's gone.
That's the link with the council.
I understand that, yeah.
Banks and everybody not paying, but the court is a big expense to the city.
Okay. What's a big expense?
Have we exhausted this, or we're going to go ahead and take?
Oh, yes, please, go right ahead, Council President.
Okay, let's decide on whether or not we're going to receive and file. We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Martin, seconded by Councilwoman Manica, for the submission of the monthly financial statement for the month of August. Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll on receiving and filing this item?
Council President Thomas.
Yes, to receive and file.
Council Pro Tim Robinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilman Ashafi.
No.
Motion carries four to one. Next, for item eight, under the community development, this is a resolution to approve the purchase agreement, development agreement, and sell the vacant commercial lots at eleven eight one seven and at eleven eight one one Hamilton DeCefia Coffee Project LLC. City Council, how do we proceed on items, on item eight?
I got questions, Council President.
We need to get a motion before we can get anything else going.
All right, we all get it going. I'll ask some questions afterwards.
Item eight, under community development, resolution to approve the purchase agreement, development agreement, and sale of the vacant commercial lots at eleven eight one seven and eleven. at eleven eight one seven and eleven eight one one Ha- Hamilton to Sepia Coffee Project LLC. City Council, what is your pleasure on item eight A?
I wanna make a motion for discussion.
And you get a motion to approve with discussion? Is that what you're looking for, ma'am?
No.
Okay.
But since I, that's the only way we're gonna get a discussion. I'll go ahead and say it like that. I wanna go ahead and make a, a motion um, to approve with discussion.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Martin to approve with discussion, seconded by Councilman Ashafi. Ms. Martin, the floor is open to you. Please, would you go ahead?
Okay, um. Hmm. This application was done July of this year. Correct.
Take a look at the date.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seven fourteen twenty-three.
Okay, so can you kinda just briefly talk me through this packet? Like this right here. That is what Mr. Mason plans to do.
Is, is that a rendering?
You need a developer intake form, correct? Like.
Okay, I thought you were looking at a picture.
Okay, so my question to you, Mr. Hinton. When a person comes to, before you, um, putting in an application for a property, what is it that they have to give you?
They have to go through the process, make an application, application fee.
And that's this, right?
Right.
Like this, that's what this is. Correct?
Yes.
Do you have that, Mr. Hinton? Do you have what she's looking at?
Yes, that's, that's a part of the application.
Okay. And see, I did, see, they have to have a developer, developer intake form.
They have to have a, they have to basically describe their project. If, if you're asking for the land, what are you going to do with it? So the narrative is supposed to describe what they want to do. Now, in, in this particular case, uh, there is not any floor plans or so on for the building itself.
He said there's no floor plans? I was gonna say, isn't that what this is?
Okay.
This, this is floor plans, right?
Okay, fine.
Okay, so they need floor plan, correct?
Right.
Um. And that's inside and out.
Right.
Okay. Um. Michigan license, where did, okay, can you tell me about the Michigan Department of Licensed Regulatory Affairs? Is that? Is, so is this a license that's needed?
Oh, yes.
And this happens in the initial, when they come to you, this is what happens initially, correct?
Right, it's more information as fast.
In the articles here. And there's nothing else that's needed from, to be presented to you. They have to do a presentation, correct?
Right.
Okay.
And that comes first, and then we let them know what we need.
And then there was a public meeting?
Yes.
Does everybody have to have a public meeting for you?
There is a requirement that we notify everybody within three hundred feet. And that we hold a public hearing, which gets posted, in this case, in Michigan.
In three hundred feet?
Yeah, and.
From where this is?
That, that public hearing took place on August the seventh. I mean, I'm sorry, second.
Took place when?
August the second.
August the second?
Mm-hmm.
Even though it says here Wednesday, Public Meeting of Highland Park Planning Commission, uh, Wednesday, August sixteenth at five forty-two P M. You said it happened.
The, the, the initial meeting presentation was August the second.
Well, it was happening on the twentieth.
Okay, so there was more than one meeting?
Right. They made more than one presentation.
Okay, so they gotta meet with you twice.
Well, we are modifying that so that the planning commission only hears it once, unless they have some questions. But I was trying to make sure that the planning commission understood all of the projects up to that point.
Okay, so this is what I don't understand. Um, I like the fact that there's gonna be a coffee shop there, but what I don't understand is this was done July fourteenth. How did this coffee shop come before you, July fourteenth, when there's people and developers that came before July fourteenth and they still haven't been on the agenda?
That's because they turned in the complete application. We were ready to.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
They turned in the complete application and we were ready to bring them forward. It's the same thing happened with one or two others, including an agenda item that did not make the table this time.
So even if you have promised somebody to be on the agenda, wouldn't you tell them, hey, there's something missing?
If there's something missing, they will not make it to you.
Right, but what I'm seeing is if you, if you notify somebody and let them know that they're gonna be on the agenda,
Mm-hmm.
Wouldn't that mean that they turned in everything that you need?
Yes.
Into you?
Yes.
So that's why I said, I think that's interesting that he, Mr. Mason, yeah, Mr. Mason did this July fourteenth, and there's people who have done all that before July fourteenth, and they still haven't made it on the agenda.
Yes.
I find that very interesting.
Yo, there, there are people who are, have been trying to buy land since I first came here, twenty twenty-one.
Right.
And they simply are not ready at this point.
They're not who?
Ready at this point. And there are a lot of developments that we did have that are gonna be coming forth. But we're not trying to overwhelm the council with everything, everything at once. We're trying to do it two or three at a time.
On Mr. Hinton, I hear you. But that doesn't make sense, Hinton. How do I set up a meeting with you, Mr. Hinton?
Easy. Ask the mayor. We, we'll get together.
Ask, I go through the mayor to talk to you?
Right.
Okay, I got it. Okay, no further questions.
Okay, now, of course, this gentleman and his, our associate is here to a- answer any detailed questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hinton. Madam Proton, you have a question?
Has the lot been assessed at market value? How, how, how are we doing that?
That assessment will come from Doug Shaw.
And what, and when?
Sorry. It, it should be a part of your package.
The assessor's value has been, he said it's in the package.
It's not here.
It's in the package, right? The assessor's value?
Right.
Okay.
On what page?
Let's get the page. Resolution says seven fifty. Let's look for Mr. Shaw's input.
I've been looking for the assessed value. I'm not seeing it.
That's got, that should be in the package too? Assessed value?
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, to you, you understand that our charter says that these properties must and shall be sold at assessed market value.
Right.
It's not a, it's not a, a recommendation. It's, it's a clear cut order.
Clear cut, and it's the county assessor.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Five hundred dollars. If that's what's in here, that's not an assessed value.
For market rate.
Highland Park.
Unfortunately, that is.
No, that's not a reassessed value, not on Hamilton. Uh, 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 Helm just sold their building for one point something million dollars right there on Hamilton. So explain to me, if they could get that out of Hamilton in that area, how does five hundred dollars apply here? Unless somebody's under assessing the property value.
Are we comparing a built building with utilities to an?
There is a built building next to this lot, sir. There, there, there are two, there are two pieces of property here. He's trying to get one one eight one seven Hamilton and one one eight one one Hamilton. One one eight one seven has got a building on it and then the lot, or one of these is a lot and one of these is the building.
Lots.
It's two lots. I'm looking at a building from the picture here.
That's, that's not for sale. That's not the, you gotta look on LandGrid to see those two lots. They're vacant lots.
I'm, I'm not talking about the church.
No, there's only two lots.
Right here, the pictures that you took right here, doesn't look like, like two lots look like one lot and a building.
No, it's two lots.
I thought we were looking for Mr. Shaw's assessed value in this.
Yeah, yeah, please.
So the, the, this wouldn't be the development cost, which is two twenty-five?
Sorry.
Would be the assessed cost? No?
I'm sorry, would you repeat?
I don't see the.
Could you ask your question again, Ms. Martin?
No, that's, uh, they're, they're developed to do the project.
Yeah. Two hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars is that's their development cost. I also, Mr. Hinton, I don't see an environmental study here. Is one of those in here as well?
They don't.
A lot of dumping down Highland Park.
The, the environment of the study takes place on the part of the party that's buying it. That they then do their due diligence, but once they bought, bought, once they buy it, then it's theirs. And they can do an assessment, they can do whatever it is they need to do to get their project done. But we don't supply that upfront.
Mr. Hinton, that was not what you did to, uh, Mr. 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 Auburn Hill. He had his environment studies ready to roll ahead of time before he even came before this council.
Yes.
He was one, he was put through the wringer. So why is the standard different now? He was required to have that information and he was required to buy the property at an assessed value. He was required to have an environmental study. Why is the process different now? Now, if we approve this, sir, I mean you no harm. If we approve this, we run into a problem cuz we deny Mrs. Ross's.
Well, let me be very, very.
Just a couple of weeks ago.
Let me answer your question.
With same information.
You don't need an environmental study of the land you're purchasing from the city. Auburn Williams did a lot of stuff that he needed to do because he was applying for low income housing tax credits. And that's a part of their process.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we don't, we don't need, we don't need that for our, our purposes.
I need to see the assessed value and I hope it's not five hundred dollars.
I will get that to you. Uh, may I ask that we table this?
Yes.
Until I get that?
If Ms. Martin will take back her motion, we can table this until we get that information.
All right.
I, I understand that. I understand that too. And so that what, 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 if we table this item, we need to also have a learning curve for city council. Uh, let's assume we don't know much about real estate. And let's assume we don't know much about the assessed value of property. None of us are property assessors. For us to try and make that assertion is erroneous. Okay?
Okay. Yeah, okay. Council President?
Yes.
Let me make one other statement. These are commercial lots.
Thank you, sir.
Do not expect those to be sold like residential lots. They're much more valuable. So the assessed valuation is very important. That's why I'm asking it to be tabled so that I can get the word from Doug Shaw. It should already be in the package.
Yes, sir.
And I apologize for that.
Yes, sir. So we have a motion on the floor that was made by Councilwoman Martin that was supported by Councilman Ashafi. Are we rescinding that motion?
I, I rescind my motion.
And I rescind my support, Council President.
So for item eight, under the community development, the resolution to approve the purchase agreement, development agreement, and sale of vacant commercial lots at eleven eight one seven, eleven eight one one Hamilton to Sepia Coffee Project LLC. City Council, what is your pleasure?
Ms. Mr. President Manica has a question.
Right now, we need to get some sort of motion action. Go ahead, ma'am.
Make sure.
Yes.
Cuz I, for some reason, I thought that I supported her.
I had it made by Martin. What do you have? I have Martin Ashafi?
No, I thought he supported.
I don't know. I just wanna make sure.
It was Martin Ashafi.
I support it.
So I also wanna make a statement. Is there anything else that we need from Mr. Hinton? So when he comes back and we take it from the table, we still not asking for something else?
Oh, no, 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 no.
We just only want the assessed value.
That's a great question.
Anything else?
So it's just the assessed value. We're not doing the environmental.
You don't need to.
That's right?
Right, yeah.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure. So when we bring it from the table.
I'm just asking.
No, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm.
I'm just asking.
I, I, I wanna, I wanna give you guys the ti- the chance to do what you need to do. I believe me, look, as a college professor, I don't know everything and I'll be the first one to tell you, I don't know.
Same.
Okay?
Same.
I'll be the first person to tell you, I don't know. So I wanna make sure that everybody has an eye. If we table this, so we get the information that we need.
Move to table.
That's a good thing. We have a motion on the floor from Councilman Ashafi to table item eight A under the resolution to approve the purchase agreement, development agreement, and sale of vacant commercial lots at eleven eight one seven, eleven eight one one Hamilton to Sepia Coffee. Do we have support for that table?
Support.
We have support from Council Pro Tim Robinson to table this item until the next meeting, pending additional information. Madam Clerk, would you please call the role on tabling item eight A?
Council President Thomas.
Yes, to table.
Council Pro Tim Robinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
No.
Councilman Ashafi.
Yes. I respect that, Ms. Martin. I do. I do.
Thank you.
I respect that. All right, this item has been tabled. There, we will still have an opportunity to take action on this once we get additional information. Once it's tabled. Okay, on to item eight. B, resolution to approve the purchase agreement, development agreement, and the sale of vacant residential lots at two forty-four Church to Six Mile Oakland LLC. City Council, what is your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve the resolution to approve purchase agreement, development, and sale of vacant residential lot two forty-four Church to Six Mile Oakland LLC.
We have support. We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman, Council Pro Tim Robinson to approve the.
Support with question, Council President.
Agreement and the sale of the vacant residential lot at two forty-four Church to Six Mile Oakland LLC. Miss Ashafi with question, Council President. Did I hear you correctly, sir?
Yes, uh huh, yes. I, I support with questions.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, Councilman Ashafi.
Again, um. I'm seeing a printout from, from the treasurer of Highland Park on the assessed value, but tell you, but they're all over the place here. I got one here that says, uh, the land I M P R value is zero. I got another one here saying the land R E value is zero. Then here I got another one saying the land R E value is fourteen thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars.
Can you tell us, Mr. Ashafi, what that means, the land R E value?
I, I, I am not sure, but I'm looking at the value here and I'm trying to figure out what are we selling this property for again. It's the same thing. It should be made a little bit clearer as to what this property is going for. It's the same problem, Council President.
So you wanna know the value?
I wanna know what we're selling this property for, and it might not be five hundred dollars.
Ladies and gentlemen, uh, we are in the middle of a gigantic land mass called the city of Detroit, hundred forty square miles. All right, it's a city. We happen, we're not on an island and we're not a peninsula, and the city of Detroit, as competitive as the prices are there, they have a similar process. We are not reinventing the wheel. And, and the whole development world is looking at us, scuttle all these development opportunities. We're, we're chopping off our own feet to show that we don't know very much about development. That's the challenge that we're facing here. We don't look proficient at all.
That is a really nice violin there, sir, but again.
No violin.
Value that we're being selling these properties for. I don't feel that's asking too much. I don't feel that's holding up the process. I don't feel that's being difficult in the least bit of manner. I just wanna know what is the sale price for this property? I don't think I'm asking too much.
Okay. Yes, sir, please. It's right there. On, on the first page, you asked a question, so I'm gonna point it out. On this document that came in these big yellow envelopes that they give us every month is a document related to the item. That information is on the bottom of this page, right here. Your question is right, is right there where it always is on all these sheets, is right there at the bottom.
Fifteen hundred. That's the assessed value?
That's what Doug Shaw said it was. Now, it is a residential property, but it's being sold to a commercial vendor. Therefore, the price goes up.
Three times normal rate, correct?
Right. Uh, sometimes twice. Uh, but that's his fault. I don't know why he does a thousand on some and fifteen hundred on others, but that's his fault. So in this particular case, is a residential property that's gonna be used to expand the gas station at that point.
Mr. Ashafi, did he answer your question?
Yes, he did. Uh, how was the, uh, how was the environmental shape of this gas station? Is it okay for them to, to rebuild?
Well, that he's gonna have to assess for himself. He has to, he has to do the phase one and the phase two.
Okay, Madam Pro Tim, you had a question?
We have to move this, um, property at two forty-four Church after giving it on for what he's, what he is for.
Oh, will they give him a variance?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Madam Manica, I saw you had your hand up.
Ms. Robinson kind of pointed out, I think we're, we're only doing the lot to be purchased. The other two properties, if I'm understanding, is already owned by the gas station.
Right.
They're already owned.
Correct.
And the land improvement value is what is, what's on site, what's on top, or what's the assessed value, correct?
Right.
So he just wants that one lot right there next to the, the gas station.
Right, he owns two forty-six. He needs two forty-four.
Right.
Mr. Hinton? So.
Ms. Ashafi, would you like me to acknowledge you, sir?
Yes, sir, I apologize, Council President.
Go right ahead, Ms. Ashafi.
All right, so, y- y- you know, I'm, I'm not understanding it. Here at the gas station, you have the price that the land is being sold for. It's a good price.
Mm-hmm.
The house is condemned. I wouldn't step foot in it. Fine, okay? So why couldn't we do the same thing on the front of this page for the coffee shop?
The information for the coffee shop is missing. Okay, that's my fault. That's why I asked to be tabled so that I can come back with what the price is going to be. And they will be sold at commercial values, not residential.
I got it.
So there will be no five hundred dollars for either of those lots.
Okay.
That doesn't make sense. You just said.
Ms. Martin, go ahead, please.
Thank you, I'm sorry, Mr. President. You just said that the rea, the way the, the reason why the coffee shop came before us is because they were ready. And now you're saying that, no, they weren't ready and still came before us.
That's my fault.
He said he didn't put it in there.
The information that.
Should have been put in, wasn't.
To have, to sell the lot should be in the package. That's not something they need.
So maybe. Mr. Hinton.
And if I make a mistake, I will admit. A waste of time to do other lots.
Um. This is on Six Mile and Oakland, correct?
Yes, it is.
It's the old gas station that's been devastated for years.
And, oh, okay, I was going to say, and it's not currently open. So it's just an extension that we want to do. This house, it's this house that we're affecting, or it's?
Right, but what he's doing, he's expanding the station, so he needs to go back further.
Not the pumps, just the station?
Just the station. Uh, uh, I, I don't know about the pumps. He probably wants to have more pumps as well.
Okay.
Or a better alignment of pumps.
Okay.
Is there any?
But he's also going to have, he's also going to have a convenience store.
Mm-hmm.
As a part of it, that's why he needs a bigger footprint.
And there is nothing as far as amenities for people who live on that corner. They have no convenience stores over there. Nothing. At present, there's nothing.
Ace Hardware and a coin island.
There's no, no, no sundry, no convenience stores, no nothing. You can't get a sandwich on that corner. You got to go all the way up to. Yeah, you got to go a long way.
Yeah, so we, we thought it would dress up that corner to have this project. That's probably better.
And is there anything missing in this package?
No.
See you, Ms. Manica.
I thought I seen it and I was looking, but maybe I missed it. He's demolishing the house.
Yes.
Okay, so he's only going to extend it? He's going to try to make it look like the pictures that we see. That's what he wants it to come out looking like.
Uh, right.
Does, does he have a, a clause in there or a determination of time for his development? I know that development may take a little longer. I'm just asking, does he have a projected, does he want to be finished next year? This is not going to be done this year. I can't see that. But I'm just asking. You don't have to, I just want to know. I think I've seen the, the demolition part. Or the other part. I just wanted to know if we had that same clause that somebody came before us last week and it was in there.
Well, you will probably actually get this underway. Hopefully before the end of the year. But if you dig a hole, you're going to have to fill it up. So my, my understanding, he's probably going to wait, wait until the first of the year because you can't pour concrete in the middle of the winter.
Absolutely.
So I think it's a spring project.
That's your prediction.
That's my prediction.
It, it says here that, uh, depending on what choice we make, it will prolong.
We will, we say no.
Surveys can take ninety days. Getting a, getting an Oprah survey, getting environmental, that takes, if you schedule it today, you might get it sixty days from now. Who knows how fast they'll come out to do the environment. They're definitely going to have to do soil tests. They're definitely going to have to do, uh, foundation testing. That's going to take a while. If you ordered it today, it probably wouldn't be available till sixty to ninety days from now. That's just starting today.
And we don't have to dig up the pumps, right, that, the?
No, but all of the survey and testing work has to be done prior.
You got to understand, he's rebuilding or he's remodeling, so that might include more pumps. But when I, I look at the picture, the pumps look, I'm sorry, Mr. Ashafi.
No, 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 it's okay, Ms. Manica. Go right ahead.
The pumps may go more down Oakland.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? I'm not sure how that direction is, but either way, it looks like a great plan. I would just ask for you to encourage him to maybe consider, um, some kind of security because I heard the gentleman. And I do understand what he said about, um, the number of people that hang out at gas stations, et cetera. Maybe having a, some type of blue light, green light. I don't know what corner, because he's right there in Detroit and Highland Park. So what he's, he's able to get.
I'll make sure he senses that.
Looking nice will make it less derelict, and so that corner does need something.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you have anything further, Ms. Ashafi, before we go on for the vote?
Yeah, um. You know, um, I was wondering, Mr. Hinton, what safeguards are there for the city? Let's just say hypothetically speaking that the people who are developing decide to do something contrary to what they told us that they were going to do. What safeguards are there for us?
We will have development and purchase agreements. That lays out timelines when the city feels that there's a revert of proposition. Because they haven't gotten done what they said that we're going to do. They can't say they're going to do one thing and then go get and do another. That's a breach of the contract.
Okay, okay. That's in the contract that they sign with us?
That they will sign, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hinton.
Go, go ahead. You get your second.
Wait, wait, Mr. Hinton, I'm sorry. I apologize. I am in favor of this project, but I wanted to know, will they vacate the alley or is there an issue with Breeze Way or anything?
You know, that I had not discussed with. So I'll, I'll have to ask that question.
You're going to have to.
What, how does that affect us right now in this vote?
Well.
I want to.
I don't, I don't really know, but I know that tomorrow morning I'll be asking that question.
Okay, thank you.
And, and taking a personal look at how that might affect the project.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please call to roll on item eight-B, resolution to approve the purchase agreement, development agreement, and the sale of the vacant residential lot. At two forty-four Church to the Six Mile Oakland LLC, please.
Council President Thomas.
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
No.
Councilman Ashafi.
Yes.
Motion carries for the one. Yeah, I'm going to revisit. On item nine, under the city treasurer, this is a resolution to set alternative meeting dates. Alternative meeting dates for the July and December Board of Review meeting. City Council, what is your pleasure under item nine? The resolution to set alternative meeting dates for the July and December Board of Review meetings.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion on the, to, on the floor to approve the resolution to set alternative meeting dates from Councilman Ashafi. Do we have support?
Support.
Support with questions.
We have, so who called for some, Ms. Manica, you called for support first?
Martin.
Ms. Martin called for support. We have support for Ms. Martin. The motion is, is open on the floor. Council Pro Tim, you have questions?
Yes.
Please, go right ahead.
Do we know why they want to set alternative meeting dates?
I think, uh, the alternative, the alternative meeting dates, uh, Madam, if you will please address this.
Good evening, everyone. It's just.
Good evening.
Uh, it's just to have an alternative. Anything can happen. Uh, and by state law, you set at certain dates. It says the July Board must meet the Tuesday following the third Monday in July. Or maybe somebody's not available, the assessor or one of the board members not available that Tuesday. And they only available on that Wednesday or Thursday. That's just giving you the option.
Or that Tuesday falls on a holiday.
Or that Tuesday could fall on a holiday. So it's just giving you an option to have another date where you're not mandated by the state law saying Tuesday following the third Monday. But at a July and Tuesday following the second Monday in December.
So you just, you, you just said that we're alternating these dates?
No, it's giving you the option. State law says certain days, but something might happen and you're not available to meet on those particular days. So this gives you the option to meet maybe Wednesday or Thursday.
So basically, we're undoing the state law?
No, it's giving you the option. You can have an alternative date. You're not undoing the state law. But the council must approve the board of review to even have this available. Otherwise, they have to meet the second Tuesday following the first Monday or assess.
So this is just giving us extra days just in case?
Just in case.
Snow day, hurricane, whatever.
Yes.
Okay.
Just giving you the option to have it available to meet just in case something happens.
And this is only for those two months?
Those two board of reviews. The March board of review is, is still set by law how it should be held, yes.
Okay.
Because the July and, and December is only one day.
Okay. Okay, got it.
Any additional questions before we call for the roll on this?
I have none.
Okay, so. Ms. Ashafi.
Um, Ms. Bebs?
Yeah.
You said that the March date cannot be changed, right?
By state law.
Okay, okay. So, so the July and, and December days of next year are going to be what?
It can still be the same.
Same dates.
Still be that second Tuesday after the first Monday or however it reads.
All right, one second.
But if just in case, like you said, uh, maybe a hurricane or a tornado or something comes in and. The space is not available, you have the option to move it to a different day instead of that Tuesday.
Okay, so July, uh, eighteenth of next year is clear. And December. December, uh, twelfth is clear. Yeah, you know holidays on either one of those days of next year?
No, there's no holidays.
Okay.
But this is just a resolution to have it available and just in case you need and not just next year.
Done, Council President.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please call to roll on item nine?
Council Pro Tim Thomas.
I'm sorry.
Council President Thomas.
Uh, yes, to have an alternate date.
Council Pro Tim Robinson.
No.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Councilman Ashafi.
Yes.
I have carries for the one. Okay, folks, got a full house. We all know the rules. You get two minutes and then some. I'm going to set the timer for two minutes. Uh, I would like to hear from citizens first. We have folks visiting us. That's wonderful, but I want to hear from Highland Parkers, if you don't mind. I'd like to get them at the front of the agenda list. Those people, you start queuing up right there. Be kind to your neighbor as you line up. Now, I'm going to let you know when you had two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Renee Ford and I reside on West Buena Vista. My first question is to Mr. Councilman Ashafi. Uh, when do you plan on having a CDA meeting for precinct five or six? The second question, and I know they're not really supposed to answer during our time, but when they get up, maybe they can speak to it. Uh, I want to know from Councilwoman Martin why she voted no for the development for the East Buena Vista area when you get a chance. Also, so if the gas station is being expanded and you're taking commercial property and he's adding residential property. And I don't know if I'm saying this right, does it have to be rezoned as the whole thing as commercial? So instead of it being commercial and, uh, residential to all be considered commercial property, am I correct? The next question is, it has something to do with the alleyway over there or the greenway? It, it, does that affect that area? The next question, Mr. Hinton said, if you dig a hole, you're supposed to fill it in. Well, they dug a hole next door to my house. And I mean, it's a nice hole. And I have two grandchildren at the age of two and three. We don't have access to my backyard. The area is disneyed. I cannot let them go in my backyard to play because that hole has that little plastic orange fence around it. So where would they fill this hole? Because it was dug almost two weeks ago. Also, I know it was a land bank issue. Who, do I contact them to repair my fence? I have pictures and video. My main concern is, and I don't know, is the safety of my grandchildren. I cannot put my trash out on the side because that hole. So if they dig a hole, when do they fill the hole?
Thank you, ma'am. That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
I'm sorry.
Anyone who wants to address it, I mean, that's, that's an administrative, a lot of that is with the mayor's office. Because as far as digging that hole, the hole issue, that is probably with the mayor's office, so we can't address that. But those of us who took notes should be able to address that during our council affairs. And that might be the card of the man who can answer those questions for you.
Okay, you know, it's strange. Everybody gives out cards.
But do you call them? Come on, Ms. Ford, do you call them?
No, seriously, I call.
Okay.
I do call and I ask questions after the meeting. And I try to be so respectful of you guys up there.
We appreciate you.
I do. But when it comes time to answer my question, I give props to where prophets do. The young lady sitting next to you, since I've been coming to meeting, is the only one that has answered any question. And I'm telling you now, Ashafi said, y'all not paying our, my lawsuit? If one of my grandkids get hurt, I will own Highland Park and that's on my life.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean that. I do mean that.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Council President, I'm willing to answer the CVC question if you allow.
You want to make sure everybody in this line gets heard first. I'm writing notes just like everybody else. Yes, sir.
Uh, Bishop V. Ricardo Thomas of Faith Tavern and Apple Church. I, uh, my family has been here for seventy years, over seventy years. Uh, our church has been in existence for over fifty-six years. We have purchased several buildings and rehabilitated those buildings. Uh, the old, uh, Ramel Catering on, uh, Hamilton and Manchester, we renovated that as well. We're now down on Geneva and Hamilton. Uh, we have been buying up property there and demolishing them and keeping the property up. After Liberty School, uh, was, uh, closed down, we purchased, uh, the playground equipment and put it on our property so that the children in the north area would have a safe place to play at. We have purchased property on the opposite side of, uh, of the church on Hamilton. And we put in a bid for the properties that are sandwiched in between our properties, uh, back in January. And we haven't got a response from that yet. But yet there is a proposal going before the planning commission to have a development. to have a development company come in and develop that land. And, and we have already put in a proposal and gave pictures as well. Now, uh, we want to purchase the property and according to the charter, if we are next to the property that is adjacent to us, then we have first bid on that property. And I want to know why that hasn't taken place. And now there's a planning commission meeting that's coming up on Wednesday. And from what I understand, they want to throw that all in together. But we haven't been contacted as to how they want to, to do that. Uh, they trying to, uh, push us out. Uh, they trying to take over. But the land that we have, we're not going to sell it. We, we've been developing property here in Highland Park for years. And, and now that everybody sees that it's about to be a turnaround, we not going to be let out. And I want to let the council know it's going to be a fight if you try to do that with us, you know? So, you know, I just want you to just get the, the ducks in the row, get it in order, you know? So that when you come to us, y'all come to us correct. All right? Okay.
Don't mess with them Thomas boys.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Speed Miller. I am the, uh, president over the trustee board for Metropolitan Els Lodge. I'm here today to find out, uh, two different things. One is that we have been broken into about four times with, uh, individuals. And, uh, the last time it was broken into, uh, merchandise was taken out. And then I was informed that the merchandise has been seized by the police. And we're trying to find out when would that merchandise be returned back to us? All right.
Chief of Police is here.
Um. However, merchandise is eaten.
Is what?
Was alcohol that?
Yes.
Yeah, unfortunately, all those tabs have been opened. Therefore, we feel it was unsafe to distribute that because most of them contaminated. So your best course of action may be to report for restitution.
Say that again?
So you would have to, you would have, you would have to contact the court and go after the suspect. Took those items to get restitution. Because if we were to give you back the liver, pointing that they were all I would be assured that someone been, been doing something to put, you know, movies and whatever people could consider. So we have concerns possibly giving that off.
So what did you do with the alcohol? And where?
We'd be in our evidence.
Oh. So what you saying, we would have to go after the suspect? You say you have opper him? All right, when can we get that information? So see, I was there before and I was informed that the, uh, they held back for evidence and then it would be returned to us. Now, what you saying is it could be contaminated and that, uh, we're not getting it back. That, that has been open. Well, that's what I'll have to take back to my body to explain to him what you just explained to me.
Were they being contacted by this?
All right.
The liberty rule, can you guys have?
Yes, we do.
Which would not allow you to take alcohol back into your building itself. And under those circumstances, so you would be violating your liberties.
Okay, I'll turn my report in. Second, uh, we have a sinkhole right in front of our lodge. Uh, and we've been calling about getting it fixed and it haven't been fixed yet.
Okay.
And, uh, water and stuff is steady flooding and flooding back into the building. But this is in the street and I called individuals to fix it and they haven't fixed it yet. They put a big cone over there by the driveway and then, uh, and that's all they did.
Okay, so I'll make a note of that too. We exceeded our, we are on four minutes now, but I wanted to take note of that. But I do thank you for your patience. Okay. Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate your patience. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Martell Mason. Uh, I am the co-founder for CPA Coffee Project, um, as well as the head roaster. Uh, I'm not just the owner of this business, but I'm a Highland Parker. My family has lived here since the sixties. Uh, I think I know two degrees of separation, half of the people that's in this room. And so I just wanted to introduce myself to the council because although we've met multiple times with the Planning Commission, you may not know exactly who CPA is. Uh, within Highland Park and Detroit, we're getting lots of developers coming in and, and taking up land and building when the locals are not getting that equity.
Absolutely.
And so what I, what I, what I wanted to do was to put a face to the name so that you understand that the development that we're trying to do on Hamilton is really going to generate income, taxes for the city. I have lived all over the world. I'm a Highland Parker. But for the past twelve years, I've spent most of my time in East Africa, Turkey, Saudi, Norway, and South Korea, working in coffee. I'm a trader. I go to Origin and I purchase coffee directly from smallholder farmers who look just like us. So when we talk about representation, inclusion, equity, what we're trying to do with CPA Coffee Project is going to allow for youngsters to see that it doesn't matter where you come from. You can also do exactly what I did. Okay, so I, I understand that there are some things that we're missing, uh, i.e. how much is the land going, going to go for? We are totally okay with whatever the city decides to do. What we want to do is just to make sure that we can quickly get this build out done so that those tax dollars can come into the city. But more importantly, so that you have a place to actually sit down, have a cup of coffee, have a piece of cake and be able to meet with your people. We don't have that right now in Highland Park. And so what I'm trying to do is to plant the seed on Hamilton, which will be the next Livernoy, Churchillville, Cass Corridor. If we can start this now, it's going to allow for the city to develop. But more so, getting other Highland Parkers who have businesses to be able to also have their spaces on Hamilton as well. So I just wanted to say that because I am very passionate about what I do in coffee, but passionate about my people. And since coming back to Highland Park in twenty twenty-one with the pandemic and seeing all the development around Detroit, but little of it happening in the city, it didn't, it didn't make sense for me to leave and go back overseas and make all this money and do all these great things for other folks when I can do it right here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so just wanted to introduce myself and just let you know that I really hope that we can get this done. Hopefully in the next council meeting, everything will be in place for you to be able to vote accordingly. But we're looking forward to bringing some business to Highland Park.
Thank you very much, sir. And you said all of that in three minutes with two seconds to spare. All right, take notes. Okay? I'm just talking junk, y'all. We just family, so let's just go. How you doing, sir?
Good, good evening. My name is, my name is Keith Hoy Bay. I'm here to, uh, I live in Highland Park on Church Street. Uh, half of the block there is Church Street. Ohana Gardens, that's, that's our place. Uh, tonight, I'm, I, I wrote a letter to Bill. I wrote a letter to Bill Schumpkamp Chrysler Jeep about the alarm. Does anybody in here aware of the alarm situation?
Yes.
Can you raise your hand if you haven't? Do you hear it? Do you live close enough to hear it? Oh, okay, so I, I probably one of the closest ones to it, period. And, and the alarm goes off, uh, this past Friday, I, every time I heard, I tried to write it down. It was like twenty times between Friday night and, and Sunday night. It goes off continuously and it wakes me up. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm suffering insomnia because of it. So I'm, I, I gave them a letter and, and the fight is on. Okay, I'm coming to you because I don't know if anybody else here doesn't know about it or do know about it. But I'm, I'm gonna go to the neighbors that live close and get their names. I know, I'm sure it's thirty people that's, that has the same problem that I do. So I'm wondering, is this something that I have to take up in court as a citizen of Highland Park with the other citizens? Or is this something that the city council or maybe the city law department or the ordinance division could do anything about? I want to know, is this going to be just my fight or is this going to be Highland Park fight? Now, now, when I talked to the guy, I went to him and I was telling him about his alarm. He played dumb like he don't know. And he made the statement, well, uh, people be in the lot every night. And if people wasn't in the lot, we wouldn't have to have that kind of alarm. That was so disrespectful to me. You know, because I live across and I can look and I know ain't nobody in that lot. It might be a cat or a possum walking by triggering the alarm, but it ain't nobody in their lot every night, every hour of the night. You know, when I go to sleep for an hour and a half, I'm up again because I hear, I sleep really light. Okay, I, I did thirty years for Detroit Fire Department. I sleep really light and it's bothering me and I'm, I'm at the end of that road, so. Is Highland, is, are we going to fight this as Highland Parkers against them or is it going to be me against them? Either way, that's what's about to happen and I want everybody to know. I got six copies of the first letter that I gave them right here and they're going to get more letters.
Council President.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I, Mr. Hoy, I spoke to them myself. I went personally there. And I did talk to them about the alarm when you called me the last time. They were supposed to have it adjusted, so now you're saying that they didn't, so I will be back out there on Wednesday.
Thank you. Still want to address that?
Yeah, I mean, just so you know, obviously there are works in place that will certainly continue after certain hours. So it'll certainly force those laws, so you're not, it's not a fight we're taking.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And, uh, I'll, will, will somebody call me or should I call somebody or?
You can call me.
Oh, okay, mayor. And, and, and I'll go through the neighborhood and ask all the neighbors to get their names and see how many. I'm sure it's thirty people that's bothered by this situation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, sir.
Um, my name is Reverend Robert Olive. I'm the, uh, president and state representative of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference for the state of Michigan and also the founder of Righteous Sons, a nonprofit organization that's also based here in Highland Park. Um, just wanted to let the, uh, council and the residents know that, um, Wayne Metro has some additional funds left and available, uh, to assist people with paying water bills, uh, specifically the Highland Park residents. Uh, so I encourage everyone who has a water bill, uh, even if it's not in shut off status, uh, to go up there with your bill, uh, proof of income. And even though income is not a determinant factor, you still need to have proof of income, um, between nine AM and four PM tomorrow at one three eight Courtland at the Wayne Metro office here in Highland Park. Yes, ID, ID, uh, proof of, uh, uh, your proof of income and the, uh, water, yes. Yes. But that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, council. Thank you for listening to me. But my concern is the same as his and I'm here to reiterate it. One thing, and this is about this alarm system that's affecting the children, the seniors and the elderly. It's unbelievable. Every hour on the hour, this alarm system, not only this Reagan, it's Turkey. When my husband went up there and told that man, sir, we're willing to work with you with this. Please bring it down. The exact words was, you people, if you wouldn't stay up, uh, we wouldn't have to do this. That's besides the point. We're in Highland Park. We should be respected just like we're all, oh, we should be respected like the other neighboring place. The mayor did go up there and talk to him. I've been writing letters after letter after letter so I can effectively maybe come with a solution. I want to work with them. They live right next door to me. Their position is we can do what we want to do. No, you can't. We got council member here. I read the mission statement when I walked in. The mission statement says, the mission of City Highland Park is to implement the city chartering to make legislative decisions that provide good government, public peace, health, safety for the city. So saying that, I'm here to beg you, please talk to them. Because when I do talk to the residents in that surrounding areas, they all agree, I want to go and blow their alarm system up. So I, I mean, this is what they're saying. So I'm here to tell you today, please, if you can work with them, it's good, but I'm gonna continue with the letters because I think it's a total disrespect for your alarm system to go off every hour on the hour. And it is loud. I hope and pray y'all come through one night. And if you sit there, you are here. It disturbs everybody. Thank you for listening. I hope you can do something. I do have a letter for all of y'all. I will be sending it to you tomorrow to validate because if we have to take legal actions, we're preparing our cases to take it. Thank you for listening.
Hello again, Gregory Mosley. Um, it's a comment regarding your vote on allowing the, uh, uh, Six Mile Oakland business to expand. If Highland Park is gonna, uh, survive or thrive, we can't put our eggs, all our eggs in one basket on liquor stores, gas stations and party stores. If residents want a sandwich, they could go to Motor City, Coney Island. You got a party store down the street on John R. and Six Mile. Only thing you're gonna do is exasperate your budget on police resources. That's all. Keep sure yourself in the foot by making bad decisions such as this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Janet Spike White and I'm here regarding getting on this bus so our taxes, our property taxes won't levy because, uh, on October the twelfth, we are asking for people to sign up. My phone number is on here. I, I do have flyers if anybody want any. And this is to talk to the legislators to, um, to tell them that we are here in Highland Park, that we do care. They think we don't care. They think we don't pay our water bills, but we do. And we need to show up Thursday, October the twelfth to let Lansing and the world know that we do care and we do pay our water bills. So if anybody wants to go, it's free. It's a free breakfast and lunch and water. It's a bathroom on the bus and just sign up as soon as possible because we really would like to go up there really strong. And my second question is, I just, and this is quick, I need someone to tell me, when is the Highland Towers gonna be dealt with? Does, who owns it? Who owns it? Highland Towers on Woodward, that's just the biggest eyesore. Does anybody know anything? Does the city own it? Yes.
I don't think I can address you in session. If you were calling, I would be glad to be joining up.
I mean, that's a big secret. That's city public. Okay, thanks because I am so sick of looking at that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, guys.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Miss Walker and I don't understand why they enforcing us to wear these masks. When you go to the hospital or the doctor, they don't have masks in the hospital no more. Only a few people. You have a choice. We're being forced to wear masks. Why? You know, the mayor don't have a right to tell us we have to have a mask wherever we go. And the other thing is that food distribution Saturday, that was ridiculous. When I got up there, when I got to Davidson at nine o'clock, and then I was going across to Davidson. Detroiters, I mean, Highland Parkers didn't get no food. You know, these people coming from everywhere. You know, these people coming from everywhere. So therefore, the police enforcement had to, uh, waste their time with that when they could have been doing something else.
Thank you, ma'am.
So who, who, who authorized that?
The food, you talking about the food distribution?
Yeah, for, uh, for Focus Hope.
You just said it, Focus Hope.
Yeah, they, they can come in Highland Park and just do that?
Uh, I can't answer that question. You can probably get somebody from Focus Hope to give you more particulars about that. The food distribution thing is very, it's convoluted, ma'am. I think where the food goes, sometimes it goes to a church, sometimes it goes to rec center, sometimes it goes to a community outreach. I don't know if I can answer that question. I don't know if anybody.
Yeah, but you know, they used our city where we couldn't even get any food.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Walker, can you give me a call?
Why, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir, three minutes.
Hold on one sec. I was also, I'm putting my timer too. So I'm Marcel. Um, I was just kind of just summarizing. Um, last session, uh, we had a Tifa conversation. Um, respectfully, Ms. Martin, um, you all got to come more prepared and do more research. Um, to sit here and ask about the same question is offensive. You all just allow, because Scotty Bowles, what I was gonna ask, can we get proof of residency? Because, um, I had to keep proving that each time I did anything in this city. Because he owns a real estate company in Birmingham, Michigan. And he does a lot of sales in this city. And last council meeting, you all hired someone on your Tifa board that you just hired to do your auction for sixty thousand dollars. So I'm not a lawyer or investigator, but it's so much going on and it's upsetting me because I supported the fire.
You said, we hired somebody, can you?
Does this count as my time? Uh, because I could look, it was, it was, it was on the water. It was Cosman Water was there and it was the person after watered. And strategically, because this isn't my time, I feel like you all put water there because you know Chris Sheed and water has a history. So by having him go through his, his situation possibly, because he, he did pause, that was the focus of that conversation. Like I said, that's my opinion. But like I said, you all have people on Tifa, someone that works for Wayne Metro, for example. Um, and Ms. Monica, I think you worked for Miss Wayne Metro and the mayor used to work for Wayne Metro. And they own a lot of parcels and they're doing a lot of grants and developments. Again, what I'm saying is it's an ethnic issue. And like I said, I support the coffee thing. There's no reason why you all aren't supporting a development that's going to bring revenue because it's Bob Boston Edison. It's going to bring that type of people to come and bring some type of income here. But the main thing I'm going to say, devil's advocate, um, everybody's family owns property here. They've been owning property, not him, but he is related to some people. And it's simply here because I'm from Detroit. You're telling me I'm not allowed to participate or I can't do anything in this city? When you don't have the tax base, you don't have the age, when sixty to seventy percent of your population is retirees and elders. And then you tore down a majority of the homes. I'm going to look at homes that people can't even afford respectfully. I make over eighty thousand dollars a year, but I'm looking at people owning the homes that's in my bracket. And you're building low income in a, in the poorer city in the state. That makes no sense. And the last thing I'll say, because I want to keep going, is I've reached out to you, Mr. Hinton. I don't know if he's still here. Um, still no response. Um, I know I see you, I called the mayor. Um, Ms. McDonald's, you knew me at least since two thousand fifteen. I should not be begging, I should not be kissing behind to have a meeting or to ask for a position when I've showed I'm the most overqualified thirty year old in this city. Like, it's nobody else coming to these niggas consistently. I've, I called you, I called you and I've had text messages from this throughout this year. You said someone would get back with me. And I'm not trying to get personal and this doesn't count because I still got thirty seconds before he asked me a question. But the issue is. Yeah, we'll talk, but again, I feel like things are not going how they should. I feel like it's too much divisions, it's too many groups. I talked to somebody for five minutes, nobody want to talk to me now because they feel like I'm in that division. And lastly, before you sell anything in this city to anybody, if you own more than five parcels, it should be a cutoff. If you own bills or taxes or something, you shouldn't be buying nothing else. They don't have a plan. Like y'all just deal with everybody else with these plans. I want to see the plan for everybody in this city that own property because it's over three thousand landlords in this city. And not one of them has come to these people. That's the last thing I said to y'all in conclusion, y'all got to do better because y'all, y'all, by elders, y'all are lazy. Y'all the ones that's been voting for this, this whole time and y'all paying all the bills and y'all not asking where y'all money going. I can't do nothing. I lived here until last.
Not, we will not do that.
We're not doing that. We're not doing that. We're not doing that.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. You've had over your three minutes. You've had over.
This, this proof too, I've had death threats. I've had death threats in this city and she just walked up on me.
Okay.
I said she was lazy when it comes to doing this. They're not reading and they're not participating as citizens.
Thank you very much. But you, when you come over to people's house, you should have your good manners on. So folks can treat you like company, okay? Have your good manners on. And that is the last person. And that is the last person. I mean, so you were very disrespectful. You were kind of disrespectful.
We don't need to add to it, Council President.
Hey, okay. How you doing, ma'am? At the podium. You want your three minutes? You, you have something to say? I mean, yeah, so I mean, this is there to end up since it's comments. We didn't got a little out of hand. All right. Come on, y'all last two. Thank you very much.
Yes, um, this, um, I would like to say something about the.
Yes, ma'am, please.
I would like to say something about, um, that ain't got my nerves bad. What, what is the program on, um? No, 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 no.
Going to Lansing?
No. Across from the library, what is that street? Yes, Wayne Metro. For Wayne Metro, um, the seniors are having problems with, um, getting help for certain things, okay? I know a resident that had got their roof done. And given the, um.
Hello?
There's instructions as to exactly what goes on. If you get a roof done and three years from now, you go back.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, ma'am.
And three years, you go back and you say that, um, your furnace has went out. They're not telling the residents that if you get a roof done one year and you come back for a furnace three more years, that you can't get that done. You can only get one thing done in a ten year period. And I found that out because I went to the rec center and they had like a little fair there with different, um, businesses and agencies that help seniors and everything about two weeks ago. And this is what they told me. And then when they go to give the, um, seniors a letter of denial, is not actually explaining why they are denied. And I think, you know, that's really unfair. And as far as, um, the food, um, company that came out. Yeah, Focus Hope, okay. I was out there giving out and trying to sign people up to go to, um, Lansing for the water. And when I got there at seven o'clock in the morning, most, uh, ninety-nine percent of the people were from Detroit and they start coming there at three AM in the morning. And the people that were there that were walking didn't have vehicles. It was only like six of them and they were Highland Park residents. And they were able to get food before the people that were from Detroit. But I just think it's ridiculous because I feel like if you're coming to Highland Park, most of the Highland Park residents should have known about that. Especially the ones who have children. We only have one school here and most of the, uh, children that go to that school live in low income housing. So I feel like that's ridiculous.
Thank you, ma'am. How you doing? You the last one in chambers, ma'am. We got one more online, so we gonna close out in here with you.
My name Christina. Uh, I have a problem.
Yes, ma'am.
And my thing is, I got kids. I have children. And the neighborhood in Highland Park that I live in has a lot of abandoned buildings. And kids like to play being kids. So what are y'all gonna do about this? Where, where are you? I stay on Brighton. I'm Six Mile, I'm Six Mile, uh, Rosa Parks. Ain't no parks around there. Ain't no really schools. Like, it's so many abandoned buildings. Like, what, what is the city councilman, like, the city council gonna do about this? Because it's a whole lot. And I have to worry about my kids in that area. Because you, well, it's so many kids in that area that don't have, we, if they want to go outside, you can't because there's nothing to do. So can y'all please figure, let me know what to do? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. We close out in chambers.
I, I know I spoke, but I do want to do a public apology. I do apologize to each and every one of you in the audience. To our council and everyone else that is not like me. I get on you guys about saying things, but when it comes to my seniors, there's only so much I can take.
Yes, ma'am.
But I hope and pray that you accept my apology because that's not like me. And I do apologize. I am sorry.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Lackey, we got one person online.
We do, I just unmuted him or her.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Press, go right ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, please go right ahead.
It's not Ms. Press, it's Mr. Williams, it's Sanford Williams.
Mr. Williams, go ahead, sir. Oh, Mr. Williams, I, I, I miss you, man. And you made your way online.
Well, I have because I'm sitting here with some attorneys and I just heard Mr. Hinton come up there earlier talking about applications being filled, Dr. Purney. I did that back in March. And I see he got people from July or whatever back on the agenda. So I'm going to end the meeting like this. I tried to reach out to Mr. Hinton. I appreciate your time, but if you're gonna have another lawsuit coming your way due to Mr. Hinton and his failure and his incompetence to lose material that is confidential. He could not find it. And now you got other people that have came in here in April, May, June, July, whatever. I sent in everything completely filled and his excuse is he has to talk to the mayor, which I don't understand why he needs to talk to a mayor about commercial property, no building on it, just property. I heard him say fifteen hundred, they charged me three thousand. I don't care about the money. The point is, I tried to reach out to him. I'm going to give you counsel all week to talk to this man and get this straightened out and let me know something. I appreciate your time, you guys have a wonderful day.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you too. Okay, so we're closing out the section on, uh, public comment. I would ask in the future that we try and maintain some decorum, y'all. We all can sing together, but we can't all talk together, okay? So we're gonna move into council affairs, starting with the councilman from District Three, Mr. Shaf.
Ms. Ford, um, my CDA, uh, C, they meet in your area once a month. Uh, the lead for that is Mrs., um, Lord have mercy, I'm, I'm blanking today. Uh, it's Mrs. Harris. Yeah, her daughter's Harris, yeah. So, yeah, yeah, so reach out to her and she'll let you know the meetings. They give me email updates and text messages every time they meet. Sometimes they have me come and sometimes they don't, but I try not to interfere in the CDACs once they get established. You know what I'm saying? I do what they tell me to do. Um, okay, so, so, so very quickly, I, I just wanted to touch on a couple of things, okay? So you know, I appreciate that Highland Parkers need time and energy to blow off a little steam, okay? I appreciate that. There's nothing wrong with a good party, okay? But that's not what you hired us for. We're here to make sure that the city survives, to make sure that you have a place to call home. But every time I come here, I hear statements about events and parties and kickoffs and, and walks and coffee and talks. But what about the city? What's the state of our water? What's the state of our taxes? What's the state of our engineering? Why isn't Oakland finished? And they have the money well allocated for them to finish it. Well, why is it still looking like a jungle over there?
Right.
What is going on with this city that we prefer to party and have fun than pay attention to the future?
Right.
Of our well-being?
Right.
Every, every council, uh, every council meeting, it is the same. Well, we're having this walk and we're having this gala and we're having this party and we're having this cake and this sandwich and this chicken? Okay, that's fine.
Right.
But when are we going to get down to the business of the city?
Right.
It's been eight months, ladies and gentlemen, I haven't heard one peep about the water.
Come on.
Nobody's told me nothing.
Right.
I haven't been informed or nothing. And I'm sitting on council. I should be the one to know what's going on, right?
Right.
I'm just as dumbfounded as you. I'm just as lost as you.
Right.
I can't understand why we have no new officers. I can't understand why we don't have the things in which we need for the safety and well-being of this city. Okay, understand, at that Focus Hope meeting, every cop in the city was there. I took a picture of them. My question is, what, what happens to the rest of the city if all y'all sitting your butts over here? That was a bad move. Whoever authorized that, that was a bad move, okay? If anybody had any sense, any common sense, they could have done something about time you got to them, it'd have been too late. They'd have been gone. No way that all of our police officers should be in one spot. Now, you think I'm giving the cops a hard time? I'm just stating the obvious, okay? And every time I state the obvious, I seem to be the monster. I seem to be the bad guy because I'm concerned about your well-being. Well, maybe I should stop that. Maybe I should stop that and just leave you at the mercy of, 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 of whatever it is that they're going to do and we see how you fare then. I'm tired of being beat up. And there was a personal attack the last council meeting. You were here for it, I wasn't here for it. I was greatly offended by it. It is an absolute lie. And the people who made that lie and posted that lie on Facebook and said that lie at this council, you will answer to my lawyers for that. Everybody that was involved, and I don't care how far it goes up the food chain. I don't care who's involved. You made a slander, you're gonna pay for that, I promise you. We cannot sit back and party these issues away. We cannot sit here and act like nothing is going on and then wait until the last minute when they set your things out on the curb because you can't afford your property taxes.
Right.
I want to know what's going on. I don't want to hear about another party. I don't want to hear about another gala. I don't want to hear about another walk, another coffee hour. I don't care. Tell me about the survival of this city. Where are we?
Right, right.
What are we doing?
Right.
What's going to be the outcome for us?
Right.
And if there's anyone in this room who is not concerned about that, I mean no disrespect, but use a damn food. If there's anyone in this room who doesn't care about that, use a food. This is your very survival, ladies and gentlemen. They're trying to push us out of this city. And if you think it's not real, if you think the gentrification is not going to happen, you watch and pay attention. If we don't stand up and fight, ladies and gentlemen, they're gonna run us right out of here. You'll have nowhere to sleep. You won't have a pot to pee in or a window to throw it out of. I need you to pay attention, HP. Highland Parkers are strong. I've said this once before, you guys are strong. Understand, ten years ago, they thought they had us when they shut down that plant. They didn't expect us to survive ten more years. Here we are. We're here, ladies and gentlemen, and they tried every conceivable way possible to squeeze and break this city. Highland Parkers don't break. I need you to stand up, ladies and gentlemen. I need you to ask for accountability of everybody in this administration. And I want to say one more thing to you. I need you to stop talking negatively about outsiders. This is what's killing us, it's keeping us closed off. There are outsiders are the one who invest in your well-being. With the exception of this council and the mayor herself. Everybody else who runs the essential parts of your city government are outsiders. They don't live here. Your chief doesn't live here. Kathy Square doesn't live here. Ty Hinton doesn't live here. Most of your police officers don't live here. Most of your police officers don't live here. Rosalyn down at the real estate window, she doesn't live here. Ms. Eleanor Williams doesn't live here.
Right.
These are all outsiders running essential parts of your government. Damian Garrett does not live here. Your engineer doesn't live here.
Right.
I'm not saying don't pay attention to outsiders, but we got to stop closing the door to new people coming in and creating this city, because with the exception of a few people, most of you in here came from somewhere else and made this city your home.
Right.
I came from somewhere else and made this city my home, I've been here twenty years. I'm not going nowhere, I love Highland Park. This is a good place, I have excelled in ways in which I never could have excelled in Chicago on the North Side. No way I could have excelled there. Okay? So we need to be welcoming and inviting to new people into this city. I'm not saying put your guards down, but give a person a chance. After all, you gave me a chance. You gave me a chance. I ran for this seat four times before you decided to give me a chance, and I am grateful for that. If you can put a little faith in me, I know that you can put a little faith in somebody else. Don't close the door, don't close your blessings, don't push people away. I, I'm reminded of what my mother used to say to me. She said, and may God have mercy on her soul. She said, sometimes when your friends betray you, the only person that you can trust is a complete stranger. Some of these people that you call your friends are betraying you and I need you to pay attention, HP. We are being bled here from every angle. We are being bled and I'm tired of trying to fight this fight alone, I'm alone here. I need you. I need you to help me to continue this fight. I can't do it by myself. So in that, I would say, HP, I love you. I am grateful to be here, I'm grateful to serve. And I hope that you stand up and pay attention and fight with me as much as I fight for you. Thank you, HP.
Ms. Martin.
Great evening, Highland Park citizens. I want to start off saying thank you so much for being here. Um, first thing I want to do is address Ms. Ford's, uh, question about why I said no to development. I'm saying, I said no because there's too many holes in what Mr. Hinton does or doesn't do, it's too many holes. Every time you have a development, there's really no answers or there's information missing. Or he, you know, lost this, forgot that, you know, there is too many holes. How can you put a puzzle piece, how can you put a puzzle together with pieces missing? You can't see the bigger picture. So that's why I said no. My thing is until Ty Hinton can get it all together with all these developers, because even in the past, he said, hey, I got some mystery developers coming in and we don't have no names, we don't know who it is. Who's coming in? Most of the problems you guys have is really not problem, with the exception of when we're not getting along, you really have problem with the administration, that's what the problem you guys are really having. So I'm addressing that. Mr. Mason. You're right, we need a coffee shop. My first question is, are you going to sell tea, because I'm a tea girl, I love tea. I have at least thirty-six different tea boxes at my house, I'm a tea girl. So when you get that developed, I'm going to need you to put some tea in there. Okay? And I'm gluten-free, so I'm going to need some gluten-free in there too. So, um, but it is great to meet you. Um, but once again, that goes back to, like I said, Ty Hinton, there's too many holes even in that. You know, you did July and I sat here and asked them like, okay, so this is what you have in a packet, you have everything, and at first it was a yes. And then as things became to unravel apart, it was like, oh, no. So that's a problem. But I'm not just talking about you, I'm talking about, like, like Ashafi said, we're eight months in. There's also, yeah, I'm sorry, correct, nine. So, you know, we don't, we're, we're a new city council, there's sometimes that we don't have time to have so many different mistakes and pieces missing and, you know, we should be improving, right? We should be getting better, right? Now, I'm going to address also what the young man said, Mr. Marcellus. He said, I need to do my research, I do do my research. But what I don't, what I can't find, I'm going to ask questions, especially if I think that you know the answer or should. That's what I'm supposed to do. So in that being said, now, on top of that, I also want to get some acknowledgement to certain people. Um, District Three had a cleanup this past Saturday, they did an excellent job. Um, I also want to know District Two is going to have a cleanup on the twenty-third, that's coming up on, um, Richton between Second and Third. Um, and then District Two, um, one of the residents called me and they want to get some people on the bus, they want to get people in the seats. There's two buses, they're looking to fill that up, that's what Ms. White just talked about earlier today. They're working hard on filling up that bus. Now, Ms. White, I'm also going to say, okay, get me some copies and I will go ahead and get that information out here. Also, I'm going to say this too, there are some citizens that called me and told me about the bus. Ms. White, a lot of people are also saying that I would, but I can't. A lot of people are saying that, I will get on this bus, but I can't. There's a lot of that going on, I will, but I can't sit that long, I can, but, you know, uh, food, I, a lot of people are also saying that, but I will get that information out here. Um, what else? Oh, also, there's supposed to be a plan for the city. It's supposed to be on the website, has anybody seen that plan? Because I looked, I was hitting, clicking different buttons, doing my research and didn't see anywhere where there's a plan, whether it's a financial plan, a development plan, put anything in that plan, I didn't see a plan of anything, even though repeatedly the mayor has said, go on the website and you will see the plan, has anybody seen that?
You have to get all the way down.
To the left? Ms. Martin? We were going to talk about it after this meeting, you going to show me where that plan is? I am determined to find it. Um, what else? Oh, he got Ty Hinton left already? Okay, yeah, I would definitely like to have a meeting with Mr. Ty Hinton to find out what is missing. Uh, we don't need another lawsuit, you heard the gentleman that was on the Zoom. You know, what's going on that things are missing? Repeatedly, people have said that they have put in paperwork six years ago, seven years ago, eight years ago, twelve years ago. Are we saying that everybody who did that, they didn't provide the proper paperwork? What are we really saying? I'm going to be asking these questions. We also said that we're, what, HP, make HP great again, or unity in the community? Well, guess what, it takes all of us to be that. All of us, it takes all of us, it don't take just city council, it don't take just administration, it takes all of us to be Highland Park great again, or to be unity in the community. And on that note, that's all I have to say, thank you so very much. Am I going on the Lansing trip?
Any five council people can get together in a room and eat cake and eat potato chips, we just cannot discuss city business. We just cannot.
As long as mine's not regular lane, I like Doritos.
All right, thank you, Ms. Martin, Ms. Manica, if you would, for us tomorrow.
Um, first, I just want to say thank you to everybody, we say that every, every meeting and we mean that. The other thing is, I think Ashafi said a whole lot, his second piece. Can everybody hear me, I hear a couple of looking frowns.
Yes.
And when I say that is we do have to accept the fact that quote-unquote, non-Highland Parkers or outsiders are definitely going to come here and they're going to help us. And we have to be mindful though and still be diligent to look and pay attention to what they want or what they're doing. But there's very few, I guess, real active, working, quote-unquote, real, as we determine it, I guess, Highland Parkers. And that would be me for one, and I have some other people that I can name, that were literally born here. Okay? That was literally born here.
Right, right.
Went to school here.
Right.
Got degreed here.
Right.
Worked here, raised a family here, et cetera. So I even have linages that say, I can tell you what it looked like in the forties, the fifties and the sixties, going all the way to now. So indeed, I don't care where I go, I can meet somebody who can tell me or say, I know something from Highland Park. Quick example, this weekend, I was in Marshall. Most people don't even know where that's at. To Marshall, Michigan. And so I, I'm sorry. I met a gentleman who's eighty-eight years old and his excitement in his face, when I could get the information for him of a friend who brought him to Highland Park to see a old basketball player who played in the forties. And he just was excited about that, and he was like, even more, that guy you called, I'm not going to say who I called, but that person you called was so quick to give you that information and tell you exactly who. And no, he did not look like you. Because Highland Park didn't look like this in that time. So we do have to understand where we have come from, what has happened since we've been here. So we get a lot mad, a lot transpired a little while ago. But we also, guys, have to, i-if the shoe fit, then you wear it. If it doesn't, then you don't.
Right.
But we do have to be accountable, including myself and everybody in this room, to something that we did not do, we did not learn, we did not care to learn, we did not have the effort that we do right now to make things happen. I know Ms. Ford, you know what I'm saying? So I understood why she was so upset. I understood her, I've seen her with a band, et cetera, I could go on and on. Okay, so I understand her, her being upset. But there is some people in our city that have chose not to do.
Right.
Or to harm us.
Right.
And they in our city. You're not going to like all our choices, no, you're not. Um, we've already discussed Mr. Hinton, we've discussed administration, so I appreciate. So we always say, you don't see where we're getting better or we're starting to listen, at least maybe to one another. I, I just sat here and listened to Mr. Ashafi and Ms. Martin just passionately tell you something that I feel like I've already talked about several meetings and meetings ago, about getting things in order and getting things lined up before you come and ask us for things. Because what happens is Mr. Williams. Now, a lawsuit, he didn't say he would do it right now, we have some options, but just that same thing. So I also ask those people who want to continue to give us a lawsuit, tell me how you're helping me. Tell me how you're helping Highland Park if you continue to file a lawsuit against us. So it does, it almost is like six in one hand, half a dozen in the other. I can try and you going to lawsuit me. Because I didn't do something or I didn't get it right. Or I cannot do something and you still going to lawsuit me because I didn't do it right. But then when I ask you to give me the information and give it to me factually, I need you to give it to me that way so that I can then make it a valid opinion or valid vote. That's all of us here. But if you can't, then we're going to go by what we have factual. And I'm saying that because I don't know why, I don't feel like I should receive phone calls about a vote idea and you don't have that factual information. And on, on top of that, you got to be accountable for wherever you stand and whatever you do. Okay? I try to vote based on facts, I try to vote based on what makes sense. What makes sense to residents and people like me and my mother, who've been here since, what, the forties? The, the sixty, no, what I'm saying, and I'm not going to go back and forth, is that it has to make sense based on the fact that there's some factual things that's in the charter and in the ordinance. Now, for some reason, and I'm not going to debate this, but for some reason, everybody know the charter, everybody know the ordinance, everybody know every single thing better than the people trying to learn it. Better than the people that already exist here. Listen, it is what it is. Uh, I am, I am again happy on the comments that were made going forward. I did want to comment, um, because it was brought up of where I work, I do work for them. Okay? I work for Wayne Metro, absolutely. But what you don't understand about nonprofits as a whole or about programs as a whole, is that there are different line items, there are different things that qualify you, don't qualify you, there's extra programs. So what I ask, if you like, is to make an appointment to see me in regards to, uh, helping to make you, get you to understand how those things happen or don't happen um, in regards to programs. But that goes from Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, United Way, uh, THA, et cetera. Everybody has a different set of requirements. There are also some time when they try to go back. And because Mr. Johnson got a program, don't mean Ms. Martin is going to get that same program or that same, that same, uh, service. Because they could have been part of two different programs that began and allocated these different services to them. So it is hard to explain it in this type of form that would take a little bit too long. But at some point, Wayne Metro is coming to city council to make a presentation. They actually came at the beginning of, of our, our service to US city council people, but we, we were having some little challenges. So they did not present that night, but they do intend on coming back and presenting to not only city council, but municipality, um, on their services. And also, not that night, but also trying to find out what is needed, okay? What's needed? So I, I did want to comment on that, I think I, I covered that. Um, I will also kind of reach out to the car dealership, see how I can assist, or just, you know, maybe it's just a matter of taking it down a level, I don't know if it's the noise, but maybe taking it down a level, but I'll wait on the mayor, because the mayor did say she was going, we don't want to bombard them. So I'll wait to see what happens when, when she goes. Um, I think I, I pretty much covered, I went actually longer than I intended to. Uh, the Elk Street, um, in front of Elk Street, Manchester, I actually think that's already in plan on our engineering, uh, on something, they're not here today, um, they will be next time probably, but I, I want to say that that was part of one of our plans that we approved earlier for them to work on paving, if you go back and remember where we talked about paving the streets and they only had certain streets and we talked about the trucks passing by. Yeah, okay, so remember that too, guys. Um, I really hope that I was able to address some of the things that, that came up, um, especially in my district. Uh, other than that, I wish everybody a good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to first and always acknowledge my pastor. Uh, y'all know I love y'all, got my peaches out there too. I've been feeling Mr. Sanford's Williams pain for, since March. And I have been trying to hold a meeting and sit down with Mr. Hinton in regards to his proposal. in regards to his proposal. Even two weeks ago, I hadn't scheduled a meeting with Mr. Hinton in regards to Mr. Sanford and a couple of other people. And it was rescheduled because Mr. Hinton hurt himself or whatever, but I'm still waiting for them to reschedule that for, again, so I could talk to him. And we got a whole lot of work to do. A whole lot of work to do, but we, and I know I can't do it without y'all. I love you, Martell. And I can't wait to get some coffee with a slice of cake from Cakes and.
Auntie, Auntie.
I just want y'all to keep coming and keep, keep showing up. Not so much showing out, but sometime we. But I love y'all, and like I said, we got work to do, and we gotta stick together for real. For real. We gotta stick together. Have a good night. Love y'all.
All right, thank you, ma'am. I'm sitting here trying to decide whether I'm gonna say something, I'm gonna say nothing. I'm gonna say something. Because when you go to the dentist and you got a cavity, that dude that drills in your mouth, you hope he's good. You don't hope he's nice. If you have a heart attack, you hope your doctor is good. You don't hope he's nice. Okay, you sick, you want somebody to tell you, you sick, boss. Okay, so I'm born and raised in Detroit. Be fifty-three years old in December. I was born in Metropolitan Hospital, a stone's throw from Highland Park. My mother went to the community college here. I'm from the far east side of Detroit. My father's a jazz singer, and sang in all these hole in the wall and private parties the jazz singers did. We need to stop thinking that Highland Park is some little shanty town out in the middle of West Michigan. We are a part of one of the largest cities in the United States of America. We are in the heart of a UNESCO designated city. So we need to stop with this us and them stuff. I don't know how many y'all spend time downtown in the Coleman Young Building, but most people that are in this city cannot differentiate when Highland Park begins or ends. Meaning, everybody in southeastern Michigan sees this city as part of Detroit. It has always been part of Detroit. So this us and them BS that we got going on here needs to stop. Okay? There are a handful of people like Ms. Manica who were born and raised here, but the vast majority of people who migrated to this city came here for those automotive jobs. Let's quit pretending that we're not a part of Metro Detroit and this us and them thing. My biggest issue is that it seems whenever a development is launched in the city by Highland Parkers, this city council finds a way to dismantle it. I'm a developer in this city. I listened to somebody tell Shu, a black woman who's from this city, that she's got enough or too much property. In the same meeting, that developer who got properties from this city council in previous meetings said to you, he bought forty parcels, site unseeded. So yeah, we're shooting ourselves in the foot. Okay? I'm pretty sure that I stay up later than most of y'all and get up earlier than most of y'all. It ain't because of nothing other than I'm constantly trying to learn something. I've been in development courses for over a decade, and I can tell you what I don't know about development. But I will not sit on this city council and pretend as if I know so much about development that I can read you the riot act about it. It's a whole lot of acronyms and terms that people need to learn, because here's the truth, y'all. It's ten thousand people in this city, and seventy percent of this city is owned by somebody else. It's two thousand homeowners in this community that own their home. Everybody else is just visiting, just renting. So we need to change our mentality. The city is not going to be giving up. If you don't own property here now, you never will. There's a house for sale for three hundred thousand dollars. Who in this demographic of twenty-five thousand dollars a year is gonna buy it? If you don't own no houses, you ain't getting no houses. The vast majority of our community lives in affordable housing. And we shot down an affordable housing deal. For the past ten months, this administration, struggling through the last six or seven years, has been trying to push through incremental changes. And every time it comes to this city council, we find a way to spit in the face of progress. This city council does. There are members on this city council that go around badgering people about their skills and qualifications, who couldn't wave a resume to show. But they demean other people. They tell you how much they love you, but like most abusive relationships, they slap you in the face, and then they tell you they love you. Okay, that's what we're dealing with here. I don't want to be liked. I want to be effective. I don't want to be admired. I want to be respected for doing a good job. You don't gotta clap for me. I'm not gonna sit in this chair and sell you out and give you a bill of goods. This us versus them mentality, this is starting within the city. It's people that let, y'all let folks come and sue the city for two million dollars over cannabis. They got help from the inside. Okay? So when we want to talk about food giveaways, during the pandemic, me and my wife rode around, and we watched all these food giveaways. That's the reason why we bought that school to build a farm. Because we asked the question, what happens one day when they say you gotta show residency to get a food basket? We grew three thousand pounds of food in our front yard. Much of it went to waste. Because we can only eat so much. How much can we provide for ourselves? How much are we doing for ourselves? You get a lot of rhetoric and a lot of rah-rah. People tell you how much they love you, and all they can say to you is, no. No, every week. Everything in these packages that are put up here for you have been put together by people with college degrees and master's degrees working for you, talking about outside and inside. It's ten thousand people that live here in the middle of a city with almost a million people. And what do people tell you? No, week after week. So yeah, we need to do better. The smartest question that was asked at the last council meeting was asked by my colleague, Ms. Martin. She said to the developer, you such a great landlord, where are the people speaking up on your behalf? And that was a mic drop for me. That's why I decided to make that decision. Because I am voting for what the people want. And I didn't, no, 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 you will not, you will not. Everybody talked, and no one interrupted. When she said that, you're such a great landlord, where are the people speaking up on your behalf? Because I talked to twenty, thirty people cutting my grass, going to the gas station, and all of them said, look out for Highland Park. I've sat in this chair, and I've made a declaration. As a professional mediator, I tell you my biases. I'm interested in the people who living here doing better and prospering. I don't have a problem with other people coming to Highland Park, but I want to make sure the people who are investing here are doing better. Without Ohana Gardens, without Avalon Village, without Parker Village, without Shep's, without Petway with this barbershop over here, it wouldn't be nothing going on up in here. So you got a bunch of people talking, and you got a whole lot more people digging in their pockets. Those development paperwork that that gentleman put together, he went in his pocket, he's already in the hole. He hasn't even put his shovel in the ground. So you want to see this community change? We need to wake up and stop the BS. Hold these people accountable that are demanding other people's skills and credentials. Ask them to show you their resume before they start to hold somebody else accountable. All these know-it-alls. Because like I said, I'm a college professor, and I don't know nothing. I tell my students in a heartbeat. It's funny how much you know and can't prove nothing. Ladies and gentlemen, having concluded all activities for the city of Highland Park, the chair is open to entertaining a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I'd like to entertain the motion to adjourn, but before I do, I really quickly want to say thank you to Blackout.
Oh, yeah, Ms. Sydney. Yeah, she's coming. I already talked to her. She's gonna come.
James, just say thank you, and she's the person with, that did the murals, or she did do all of them, but she created that. She's the organizer. And so I just want to say, hey, thank you. It was wonderful. If you did not know, those artists was from Jamaica, Ghana, Accra, Ghana, Jamaica, Hawaii, Los Angeles, locally.
Chief McFly is from the east side of Detroit, east side.
Couple of places that I might have missed, Chicago, et cetera. So just keep that in mind, and take a look at it if you haven't seen it. And I just say thank you to you, Ms. James.
Okay, the motion is on the floor to adjourn for Ms. Manica. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting adjourned.